Ratification list, Mr. Marion?
Yes, I have a couple items here and I don't know if Mr. Baker can assist in this. But there's several items that are on the ratification list. And I've run off some numbers that maybe you can clarify, Mr. Baker.
What are we on right now? What point? What, where are we on the agenda?
We're on item 5.5, the ratification list.
Thank you.
Mr. Baker, I have the tactic that sent us 22 amendment according to C O R numbers. So this process those four, so it's she already. Item 264, which is a guardrail clarification. Can you give me a little bit more on this? It seems that normally guardrails are of a certain height. And was this a height issue? Was this a configuration issue?
There's a, these are guardrails along the entrance to building B. And D S A in their review did not require guardrail there. The inspectors cited the height, the code, the use of that passageway, they didn't add guardrails there.
Was the height exceeding thirty inches?
Yes.
Okay.
What it does is it varies from less than thirty to more than thirty.
The second one is item 413, it's power lighting. Did the original plan meet the code requirement for minimum lighting requirement? As a one foot candle, is this over and above what we needed?
No, this was the light fixtures underside underneath the canopies were not included on the price set that was prepared by D S K and priced by Turner. The D S A did not, did not catch that lighting if our fire went out quite some time ago. And so lighting had to be added to one of those canopies, light fixtures.
All right. Next item is 262, which is a roof deck detail. I'm looking at this as an Arizona mission on behalf of the architect, unfortunately. Is that your assumption on that?
That's correct.
Okay. The next one is, I'm going to say guidance is number 535, which is walkway grades at basketball court. I'm looking at that description, code compliant walkway between D and E. I think that's under the walkway.
Correct.
Looking at that configuration, I don't conceivably think that is it the slope of the walkway or what was the?
It's probably the, their elevation on the civil engineer's plans for layout. There are areas where the walkway did not line up, where it hit the pavement. Now, that whole area there had errors in how the civil engineer had designed the work for the survey grades.
All right. And then the next one I have is item 495 versus revised San Pablo Avenue sidewalk. I've run that sidewalk before construction started and I didn't see the basic sidewalk as a sandblasted finish. So why are we incorporating the sandblasted finish, which is an expensive means of providing a finish on, on concrete when it resurfaced back to the original and wasn't intended?
The, those sidewalks were improved, I believe, fifteen, twenty years ago by the city.
And they used sandblasting at that time?
That's correct. And the project included adding sidewalks, a more modern detailed sidewalk like we have throughout the site, a more, a more simplified detail. The city was not in favor of that. The city wanted us to restore the original architectural sidewalks all along San Pablo, which have tiled insets and sandblasted concrete. We tried a number of occasions to talk them out of it, frankly. We talked, we tried to at least have them talk out, talk them out of doing the sandblasting because the sandblasting was about thirty thousand dollars and they declined. The city does have jurisdiction over those sidewalks.
All right, and then finally, item 457. If you look through the description, it says, I just want to know who changed the requirement? It seems like it was changing mid-screen.
Which item is this?
It was the added high moisture adhesive.
Ah, that's exactly what happened, in fact. It's a very good, it's a... The specifications required for adherence with A S T M standards, which is a standard, I believe you're aware of, but A S T M standard, which is a standard that needs to be complied with. After bid and before we put the flooring down, the A S T M, A S T M standard changed. We've had this happen in a number of schools in regard to linoleum adhesive. And they changed the measuring, the way you measure soil moisture in, in slabs from pH to relative humidity. And no one's able to pass that, that new test, so we had to, we had to seal it down.
And then finally, item 477, solid wall steel changes?
Yes.
You know, in my experience, it's been that you look at a fan table for a selective windows system and you would get a ballpark if you needed steel or not. I got to admit, was the architect, can you tell me that fact?
What they did is they, they drew the design, the drawings and specified a certain windows system. And when the straw drawings came back, we, the window, the curtain wall manufacturer said we have to have steel in those to get the proper structural bracing in those large, these large windows. And they did not specify that in the drawings.
Did, did it go through deferred approval process with the state architect?
It did go through with the state architect and the D S A did not catch that also. It brought it by the window subcontractor. They then had to issue a C D C or a change request to D S A, which was approved.
All right, thank you.
I have some questions for you, Mr. Baker. Just to clarify, the, the by San Pablo Avenue sidewalk discussing with Mr. Marion?
Could you talk louder?
That was eighty-three thousand dollars?
Correct.
And that was something that the city required Public Works?
That's correct.
Required Public Works, correct. And, I mean, I, I concur with Mr. Marion that there's nothing that looked special industry-y about that sidewalk.
Not only that, as we, you know, the original, the bid scope work was sort of, we did an all-new sidewalk there that matched the sidewalks on forty-seventh and fifty-third. And the city Public Works notified us that they were going to require us to repair and match the sidewalk which had been installed fifteen, twenty years ago.
And what was the rationale for requiring that?
That it had been installed as a plan to kind of have the same sidewalks all along San Pablo. Because I think for several blocks, they have those sidewalks in my pictures.
So they, they wanted to match the?
Correct.
The first city review we went through with Public Works and planning to not require that. A number of these items were changes required because of, what do you call it? Arizona mission for the D S K, the architect, correct? I guess we'll talk about that a little more.
We'll speak, we'll speak to other items. That's correct.
The pool deck subgrade, unforeseen condition, the original pool deck is twenty-nine thousand dollars. It's sitting on dirt. It's a base rock. It's unusual.
Yeah, it's, it's unusual to place concrete without, base rock is a heavy gravel. The, as you can recall, the, at the city's request, the board's approval, we added replacement of the pool deck to the pool scope work some months ago. And we pulled up that pool deck instead of gravel, it was helps for drainage and stabilization. It was that they had poured that slab in the nineteen-sixties right under it. So we had to excavate down the dirt and put about six inches and put base rock down so that the new pool deck would be stable.
That was a nineteen-sixties era, correct?
Correct.
As we only discovered, correct?
The original construction documents did not show any detail of that pool deck. So we didn't know whether it was poured up. It's unusual, even in that era, not to put base rock under the slab.
And overall, were there any items on here that surprised you or did you saw all of these coming from?
These have all, as always, these items were identified, fixed several months ago on the project. And as soon as we identify something, we make sure that it's compliant with the contract terms. And then we place an estimated cost in the budget. So these have all been included in our budget contingency for some time. This represents the final negotiation of each of these prices for these items with Turner Construction.
How are we doing our negotiations?
I will, I'll show you that a little bit later this evening as well.
And are you anticipating further changes of?
Yeah, what we bring forth to the board is we don't anticipate further changes now, but we have again, as we negotiate this final prices. We have about the last million dollars worth of items to negotiate. And in the coming weeks, probably two more rounds of ratification list items and also some board, board items for vote. But we are in the budget. We have not, and we carry the, we carried the first number we get from Turner. And then we negotiate that and usually it comes in less by, you know, ten percent or so on average. So as we negotiate those, and I'll talk about that process later, we then will finalize the prices and bring those forth to the board on the ratification list. But they've been included in the overall budget for quite some time.
Okay, thank you. Questions to ask? All right, we have a motion on item 5.5.
Some move.
We have a second, a second. Rule call please.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pat?
Yes.
President Nellin?
Yes. Okay, that concludes our consent items. We're now on to our discussion items. And we move to the first item, the, item 612, E C C L update. I'm sorry, you had to go to full screen.
Right. This is a pretty extensive update and there are a lot of people here who want to talk about E C C L update. I first want to say that, that there's a large team of people who've been working, working their tails off the last several weeks to cross the finish line. There is work that has not yet done. It is not work that is occupancy. I'll speak to that. With any new building, there are things we've worked out. We're going to, we are going to be here as long as we need to be here to help get things done and get to where they need to be. For the teachers who've been working with Nemo and Elizabeth, please continue to contact them at any time to, if there are any concerns you have, so that we can continue to make sure that we get everything done right and everybody's happy. But there are people right, right now working, remember we have sixty, we include sixty percent of the subcontractors are from the local area. We've got over forty labors from the immediate Emeryville, North Oakland, West Berkeley area who are working very hard as members of the community trying to make this happen. You know, we've got a ways to go. I'll talk about that. I'm welcome with any comments that you have, any questions. But there are a lot of people who've been working very hard to deliver this project for the people in this room of the community. I'll start by saying that. Okay. Just as, as a reminder, in terms of the buildings, because we're referring to buildings A, B, C, D, E. Building A is the community center, which is the corner forty-seventh. Building B is administration along San Pablo. Building C is the eighth grade school and then the room we're in, we're in C right now. Building D is the high school. Building E is the gym and pool. So the most important thing is all buildings and the site have approved, approved by occupancy by every agency having jurisdiction over this project. That includes the division of the state architect, who is the permitting agency for schools, and the inspectors of record. We have two full-time inspectors of record. That those inspectors and the field inspector out of the Oakland office have all approved the site and buildings for occupancy. It's a very important distinction because that's the legal, the legal approval for occupancy. The state of California has approved all the elevators for use. That's a separate inspection. Alameda County Health Department has approved all the kitchens for use, which is an important approval. And the notices of substantial completion have been issued by the architect, D S K, which is another requirement, contractual requirement. We do not have the only, we have no other sign-offs or approvals by governing agencies. The exception of that is for the stormwater throughout the site. That is something that the city, Emeryville has jurisdiction over and that takes place over a year. They have to go through a rainy period, a rainy season to do that approval. In terms of occupancy, the only building that's not occupied is building A. The city has not yet moved in that building. They will do that next week. Building B administration, the two school buildings were all occupied last week, started occupancy last week. And gym building E is now final, has final completion, we're in warranty period in that building. With punch list and everything complete. We had two courtesy walks over the last two weeks by the city of Emeryville, Public Works. They again have no permitting authority, but they have jurisdiction over the sidewalks, as I had mentioned earlier. And also they're the one who oversees again the stormwater control plan. We had the public works director in a meeting today just to kind of talk about the portions of the project that they are concerned with, such as the signals also, signal sidewalks and stormwater. Alameda County Fire Department is the first responder. Again, they're not the governing agency, believe it or not, D S A is in terms of fire life safety. We did a walk with them so they can understand how the, how the project works, where the fire alarm control panels are, where the heights are, and things of that nature. They had a few requests for some additional signage, not required by code, but convenience would assist them in the process of putting that in. And as you can see, the walk in the site, there is quite a bit of work that is not complete yet. The architects issued their punch list at substantial completion, which was over the last two weeks. All this is not work required for occupancy, but it is required to be done for terms of contract to be done. The great majority of this is site work. There is some work inside interior of the buildings that's not done, but I think as you'll see, that's much more really complete. We're really, that's mostly paint touch-up work and some other things. I'd be happy to listen to any other things that you're concerned aren't done yet tonight. Most of it's site work though, and I want to kind of go through these things, what they are in the middle of being completed. I want to talk also later about accountability, who is accountable for these things not being done, what the, how the contract works and how those things sorts of work. And I want to go through that as well. First is the side of the community commons. That's been installed today, but we can't, we can't walk on that until Monday. That's a play area that we, that'll be ready for use on Monday. So in the play structure, if you see out by fifty, on by fifty-third street, has been installed, but the rubberized area around that has not yet been finished. That'll be ready for use, for use in play on Monday. Planting is the main thing. Almost all the trees were planted. I think about eighty percent of the trees are planted. The shrubbery, which obviously is not required for occupancy, will be going in. I want to talk later about when that work will be happening, but that still needs to take place. That'll be done over the next couple of weeks. The multipurpose room partition, like you see this partition here, we had a fabrication problem with that. And so rather than have it kind of half-installed, we want to make sure that everything is complete. That will be installed by the fifth, a week from Monday. The sprint running trend out here.
I think there's a, but the play structure that referred to that could use Monday.
The one that we see up on fifty-third, right, which is for the lower grade.
It's for tender.
What about the wall hall? The wall hall was added to the project, later in the project. It comes from the Netherlands. Six months, eight times, we said that the one was approved by the board to install that, exactly October. We, we, the board added the project and asked at that time that it would not be installed until October.
Okay. I appreciate your reminding me of that. What about the play structures that we have in that courtyard?
The, the, the play structures that go to courtyard are portable basketball hoops. They're portable. Those that are inside, we just need to get, those are stored, those come out. They're, they can be, they're not, there were poles that weren't. There were the poles, the poles were removed from the project because they were difficult to build and we actually basically decided to do the wall hall instead of those poles.
Okay. Are there other striking in, in, for the courtyard? I recall there was a lot of striking at one point.
We talked about the striking for four square and the third games. We've held off on that and maybe the superintendent can speak to that.
I can. There was another change that we made of the city's original design in the, quite a number of years. Really focused on this area as a, more of a recreation weekend area, more than a playground. So after a number of conversations with them, I think we were able to get them to agree that, and this is, I don't always get to share it, just the, the extent that I will defend our space. So I do that, but I just can't go share it with the details. But I did make a very strong case for the city that we could not have another man in the middle of this area. And so we have more asphalt available now. And we're going to have some portable basketball nets, the nicest ones we could find. And the city, one of the city staff members and I are going to experiment and see different locations. So we decided to hold off on the striking temporarily. We can still strike for the four square, but we decided to hold off some of the striking for basketball lines. And so we're sure where we're going to place those portable nets.
All right. Yeah, the commons design, we've, there's been much debate between the city. The city's viewed that as a community kind of park space. Whereas the school views it more as a player. The very reason we had those, those architectural poles taken out in the wall hall instead was because it's more effective for play area. We also took, there was a large, sort of, you'll see there's one planter out there, a sort of oval planter. We took one of those planters out to provide more play space. And then we've introduced some play equipment that can be wheeled into that space during school at time and wheeled off the site when we have a, when there's a community event. Also, I want to point the fencing, the site fencing, the site is completely secure for occupancy. As you know, the site has different zones that are where you close off and open up areas at different times. All of the gates are in, the final fencing, the final fencing panels, you'll see some of those in. They're, they're ironed with mesh. Those will be going in every day as we put those in. But in order to make the site sure the site is secure, we have temporary fencing throughout the site. And by temporary, it's not fencing you can take down. It's chain link. The chain link will come down. And the architectural mesh panels, which are heavy-duty mesh, not lightweight, but they look like mesh, like the grid. Those will be going up over the next several days. Parking is available, all the parking lots are complete. The, they'll be utilized by students, faculty, and teachers and staff tomorrow. The striking in the spaces though, that will be done on Saturday. All of the ADA accessible spaces are marked color. Also, we have permanent, we have some, all the permanent parting signs is not completely. We have temporary signage throughout the site and on all three streets. On, as you see, that's, those are all marked and it's closely marked. The permanent signage will be done by the fifth. Library shelving is being installed now. Will be done on Monday. There's a lot of touch-up painting. As you've seen, if you're in the classrooms, we've got blue tape where the touch-up paintings take place. Also, the steel beam elements, those diagonal beams, we rejected that work because it was, it was painted, but it was over rough finish. They've grinded those down. So if you see some of that steel is not painted, it's because they ground them down. They'll be coming off hours to paint and finish that touch-up painting. One of their public comment, there was discussion about an injury to a teacher. At the entry to K H school, that work, concrete complete work was completed at the end of July. We were concerned about it because it had one small step. We talked to inspectors about that. The inspector says it was code compliant. We talked to the architects. They said it was code compliant. But Swinburne raised concern to the district that even though it's code compliant, we were concerned about it. We directed the architects to provide a different design. They did. They provided that design yesterday. Took them a couple of weeks to work it out and get it approved for code. But in the meantime, someone tripped and injured themselves. So that work is going to be going in. We're going to tear concrete out and rebuild that so that your passer is gone and that will be done by the fifth. But it's something that we were not happy with. The architect told us it was okay. The state inspectors told us okay. We were still worried about it. We told them make a change. They redesigned that now and had it approved by the permitting officials and that will be done. But while we've been getting that redesigned and submitted, after we done, after we raised concerns once it was built, someone did injure themselves. And we also were working with the district's insurance company to make sure that that is, that, that, that person's is completely covered. I'm happy to answer any questions about that. Okay.
Fethi, can you?
Yes.
That was a new slide, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry. There's one, I apologize. There's one new slide. This is the one new slide.
So can we, and I understand you're, you want to give us the most updated?
Correct, because this was submitted to the board back in last week. This is one new slide.
So can we just update that?
Absolutely. In the past, when we've done that, we've updated that a certain way. The moves, all of the moves are complete except out of the unit against the library. But everything else is, the city is the last, the last to move. They're complete this week and then they move it next week. Furniture delivery is complete except for the tables and chairs in building A, which come week after next. All of the security, audiovisual, fade and telecom systems are all operational, I want to point out. The two most important of those, which are security and fire, fire life safety also. The district has a monitoring company called Convergent that monitors all those systems twenty-four seven. Those are up and running, so they monitor in their office. Also, they are monitored here on site by district facilities. We've had training levels, all those, all those systems are up and running. The car keys have been distributed to all, to teachers and staff and we'll work on those doors. All the keys have been distributed, but all these systems are up and running. I know a lot of teachers have been working with the monitors the last couple of days to understand how they work. Site safety and security, there's nothing more important than that. We have a security guard who is going to be continuing here evenings and on weekends until we reach final completion. They, I'll talk about the punchless work I mentioned earlier. Turner's, after this evening, they're out of here. They're only, they're, they're only going to be here after three-thirty on weekdays and on Saturdays, as approved by the city council. We're going to be working with the city and district in terms of at three-thirty, you know, there's some after-school activities, especially the city's got after-school activities. We wouldn't work in those areas. But we're going to work around in the late afternoon to evening and on Saturdays. They bring their equipment for the day. They do their work and they take it away with them. We do have two storage rooms that are restoring some things, but that's going to be a, and if you see, if anyone sees any construction tools or things laying around in the morning, let us know immediately because that has been, that is not allowed. Some quick photographs. A lot of people walked around the site. This is building A. Concrete and landscape are complete there. The city doesn't move in till next week. Many of you are in this room today doing a training. This is the building A multipurpose room. There's a catering kitchen that's, that was again, that's been completed, signed up by health inspector. Restrooms all complete. This is Ms. Lisa Tameray, her new office last week. This is the district office. You know, when they were, they moved in last week and are still continuing to kind of get things settled in there. This is the, the main lobby in building B. The city's been operating this for the last two or three days. For, this is where the, the city operates the space for recreation activities and other things. And so Republicans have been coming to this during the day and asking to sign up for classes and things of that nature. This is looking down from that lobby. The city, I want to buy this one because the city has an art program that the city, I mean, runs. There are three art pieces. One has been installed. The other two will be installed this fall, again during off-hours. And one of those is a very large sculpture which hangs from this space. These have not been installed yet. The city did not choose those artists until May of this year. The one piece which is done is there's a Native American themed mural in the teen center. This is what a city space off of the main lobby. The third piece are some sculptures that will go outside of the library. Those will also be installed during, during the fall. This is the city's workspace. They're, they're now working. This is the second floor, which is the counseling, wellness and, and student health center. This is the student health center. This is all complete, ready for lifelong to move in. Lifelong is the county's operative and they are going to be moving in over the next few days. This is the grand stair of the high school. The students will come in off of forty-seventh and up the staircase. These in fact are students who are visiting their teachers this afternoon. This is the library. These are from last week. The library was our staging area for, for furniture. And so this is all moved out and now library shelving is going in. These are the library security devices so that folks don't walk out the door. These are our, our furniture folks. This is a week ago. The stuff's all out of here now. This is the city offices. There's boxes around and packed and there's chairs in this room now. This is from last week. They're offered. And this is in the, the high school admin area. And the classrooms, I've got two classrooms. The classrooms in the high school are all complete. Those were all moved in and they look great. We have visiting teachers all day, asking them to try and work that in. Things that weren't quite, quite working right, like some of the lights. And again, the monitors. This is one of the labs. You can see one of the monitors in use there. This is the teachers. They're kind of setting up in there. These will, these are all complete. Then at the eighth grade school, this is the view from the, from the field. This is the exterior. Going from the top floor down, the third floor, which is grade six, seven, eight, these are two. There are these They're these sort of casual seating areas. They're out of woodwork where people could, the students can hang out and so forth.
What's this picture from?
This picture's last week also.
Is there some girder?
Yeah, there's the girder, right, that's your girder, right. This is last week, the girder's gone. These, this is, these are pictures from today. The, I'd say the classrooms, there are still about four or five teachers who are upstairs right now, finishing up doing, installing their, their furniture. But most of these are all moved in. Again, this is the third floor classroom, science classroom, another one on the third floor. And then this is that other area at the end of the third floor for seating and socializing. Sorry. Let's went backwards now. I'm not sure why this is not, anyway.
You might just use your arrow keys and your keyboard to grab the trouble.
Okay, that's a great idea. There we go, sorry about that. Now we're down at the, this is the first floor, these are the, no, this is the third floor, which is grades two through five. A lot of these classrooms are really, this is the most complete of the floors in terms of movement in classrooms. This is one inside of the two, these are staircases, they will primarily use, they will use the elevator to meet, but there's two, three staircases that have a great view down to the field. Now we're at the first floor, which is the K, kindergarten first floor. This is one of our architects, Resvan, who's doing punchless back check work last week. Classrooms are largely moved in down on this floor. Most of the, a couple of these are really complete now, or most of these are complete, I should say. This is where we're in, this is before, this is again last week before we pulled the floor protection up. You can see there, we've got the cafeteria tables there. The kitchen, you can see from here also, all those closed off, this is the servery, so they're actually stocking that with food for tomorrow right now. And then the field, this is a view from the field. This was also taken last week, all this stuff's been cleared out now. This is all complete with the exception of that sprint track, which will be done for you on Monday. This is our nursery, a lot of this stuff has been spread around the site now in terms of the shrubs, the trees are mostly in. You can see them doing, this is right outside here, you can see this, they'll be planting in those areas over the next week, the plants in those berms. This is an old photograph, this now, this lawn is now in, the trees are now in. This is now pretty much complete for your walk out there right now. And then along 53rd, this is all been planted, this is again from last week, with shrubs. This is the city's greenway. This is the large sidewalk on 53rd that's in the city's general plan, it has to have a large, I think 25-foot wide landscape there. We have boulders, shrubs, mature trees as you walk down along the field. This is lawn here, this is planting these trees, these trees are largely in right now on the, the high school, again, this is from last week. More field shots from above. This is from the third floor of the K8 grade school. There are the baseball dugouts. And this is our handy little turf maintenance machine that's part of a contract the district will operate to maintain the field. And there's the swimming pool, which has been used for a while, pretty popular, has been enjoyed by a lot of people the last few months, couple months. Okay. I want to talk a little bit about change orders and how this works. This is an update that I give every couple of weeks, a couple of months. Again, the way this works, these are changes to the contract, so we, the, the district budget contingency, about $7 million contingency for things like this, and I'll explain what those things are. When that happens, when we, and when something happens, this can be something, when the district wants to change, we find something underground that's, that's, we didn't know about. There are design issues with the drawings we need to fix. Turner students have noticed a change. We approve that, but they have to proceed before we negotiate costs. So they're at risk until we negotiate the cost. Turner students have changed requests, our estimators review every one of them for material quantities, unit costs, and also if we can save some, some costs by re-engineering those things. We respond to detailed review and we immediately negotiate. So today, again, our total contingency for these items is about, is $7 million. So 6.8 is what we've got. Caveat, this includes the pool and some things which were added. I can, but of those which we negotiated, which is the point of this, what was submitted was 7.9. We've approved this for 6.8, so we've negotiated about 1.1 million dollars down from what Turner originally submitted. So we review every one of these to make sure that the bond dollars are being used properly and everything is contract compliant. We, for example, they submit a price like this, we review it, tell them what thing is wrong. This one we negotiated down from 33 to about $27,000. And we do that on every one of the ones they submit. Just again, it's due diligence to make sure that we're doing this and make sure that we'll stand up to audit as well. This is an update, and this is, kind of gets to the point that Mr. Merritt, Mr. Appel made earlier, is that when the continuous budget, we budget for these categories. Unproceeding conditions, 2.5% of construction, 1% for permit requirements, two for design errors and emissions, and one for contractors' contingency. We're hitting just about all those targets. We're a little high on the design errors and emissions. That's one area that we need to look at going forward. But the other ones we're right about where we project to be. Now, these are things that are outside of when the district or city changes scope, such as when we added the pool and added some technology, such as these boards right here, and some other things. So the point of this is that we're not using, this is what we budgeted dollars for these, we're right about at that amount right now. And the district did put additional bond funds into the project, but those went towards enhancing the project. The pool, adding technology, paying for furniture. Okay, just in terms of project completion, I want to talk about, this is kind of contracting, but substantial completion definition is where the buildings are complete for intended use when they can be occupied. Depending on by DSA and the architect, the project contract date is July 25th, okay? So these are the dates that we actually reached, as certified by, the building was done earlier, but A, B, C, and D, you see, they're all about, they're about 11 to 13, four days late. But we did achieve those, those dates, which is why we can occupy the building. Turner's contract, they have a $5,000 day penalty for each day that they don't make those dates. They have to prove if there are things beyond their control that led to that. There have been, there have been some design issues, but there have been things that didn't contribute to that. So in the coming weeks, we'll talk about how we resolve that issue. I want to point out that, as I said, since the city schools meeting, we do anticipate approving one additional dollar in change orders for Turner related to schedule. They're, they're on the hook for this in terms of dollars. I want to point out some very important points, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about that. Final completion, the date is September 1st, which is, which is next week. These are all the other things, there's operations and maintenance documents in, they have almost all those in right now. Final sign up of permanent agencies, we now have that, there's no more permanent signups to have, we achieved that. Completion of punchless items, that's a lot, that, there's a lot of punchless items. That's all the things I talked about earlier in the site. There are things in your classrooms that might need to be painted, cabinet doors that don't work, a light switches doesn't work, a faucet that doesn't work properly. That stuff's all about to be complete before the warranty period starts, so that's important. The pressure now on Turner that they have achieved this is they've got a, the warranty period, they're on the hook for that warranty period until they finish, until we say, okay, the warranty period can start. And there's a two-year warranty period, so if things aren't right over two years, we can call them back at no cost to fix it. It's a very important concept, so as we move into the school year, if there are things that aren't working right, we're gonna be, we'll talk about the process, but basically, staff and we'll contact facilities, facilities will work with us and Turner to get those things done. In terms of, my last slide here, moving on from maintenance. Building systems commission, start commission is where we make sure that everything is working properly. So that process has gone, we finished that process and things which aren't done aren't properly, properly, we've got that up with the punch with. Systems training, district and city staff, we've done a first round of that, but that's kind of ongoing to make sure everyone knows how to operate the thing. The city and as part of the joint operating, the city and district have monthly programming meetings, once a month, in terms of how they program space. What classrooms are used for city after-school programs? When does the district use the gym or the pool, because the city operates those? And so that's gonna be ongoing every month for the, probably the whole history of the ECL, how you program that space, at what time you use your things. There's also monthly O M meeting with the facility staff of the city and district in terms of janitorial, cleaning, field maintenance, things like that. Again, two-year warranty period, which isn't gonna start until Turner's finished absolutely everything. And then one more thing I want to point out, which I gave a presentation to the board two months ago. That there, the citizens oversight committee had urged doing this. The buildings here are what are called solar-ready. What it means is that we can put solar panels on the roof. They were not included in the original project, I'm not sure what that, why that was, that proceeds are involved in the project later. You basically can plug in solar, solar panels. What we're, what, what the citizens oversight committee is advocating is something we have worked with many districts to do, which is, works out very well, is rather than paying bond dollars to put a system in that might become obsolete fairly soon, enter into what's called a PPA. And what that is, is that, is where you go into contract with a provider, provider owns the system, they basically put the system and own it and maintain it. And then the district pays, buys electricity through that provider. It's, it'll reduce rate because it's solar, it's not PG&E. And then after a certain time period, you can enter into a new agreement, they can put new technology on. But there's a longer presentation that, that we gave to the board a couple of months ago. We are including, we are basically helping the board at, at, at our cost, preparing and putting an R and P for that, we've drafted that complete. And then reviewing that, we'll be reviewing that with the district and district council over the next few weeks. The industry standard, which is our regulations, you run the school for about a semester. Some people go the whole year, you see what your power loads are, that kind of tells you how much solar you need. But that would be, that'll be going back to the board in the next few months to put all solar to the ECL. I'm sure there are a whole bunch of questions, and I know a lot of here today to talk about that, and I'm welcome to answer any questions that you have.
So, appreciate that thorough presentation that you're bringing us up to date. My, I guess, first question is, why this is rightfully, we had it planned.
Yeah, so the, the.
Completion date and you should, yeah. They, they, those were all delayed and there's still lots of bits and pieces that are unfinished.
Right, the big, the big culprit bill has been the site work and site concrete. One major, one major issue is, again, a design issue, is that when they do the layout of the site concrete, we had about, about 100 elevation and design things didn't work out. They laid out where a path laid to meet, where the design of the top of the wall wasn't done correctly, so we had to sort all those out. That's really probably the main driver. And the site concrete has to go in first before we can do landscaping to follow. We did our, as you can see, we, we finally finished our last piece of concrete today, so all the concrete is now done. That's the main thing that's not complete. We had a fabrication issue with the fabricator of the partition that we had to sort out, that was their fault. Turner's gotta be responsible for that. I kind of went through those items that I talked, spoke to earlier, the major items. Everything else is really what they call a standard punchless item, like painting and things like that. But most of we have had issues with the site itself. We, again, the, for example, the fencing, the finished fencing panels are related to site concrete. So we had to sort out a bunch of site concrete issues in order to then install the site fencing. Other items, again, landscape, the landscaping follows the concrete. Really, the site concrete was, has been the primary issue. However, I will say this, it's not just design issues, it's also Turner. It's a lease, leaseback contract, the turn, the onus on Turner to solve those things as well. Which is why I don't foresee approving any change orders for extended schedule. And in fact, like I said earlier, they are at risk for $5,000 a day that they went beyond 725. So it really has been primarily site work, as I think the building interiors were really pretty much down at the end of July. Again, punchless work, painting, things like that, there wasn't been quite, things that, you know, the architects punched was not. But most of the issues have been the site work.
But, yeah. It's wonderful to be able to move into a new facility and there are so many good aspects of this facility that are significant, I credit you. We had to pour, but buying a new house, there's anxiety about moving in and it's like we're being delivered a house that's not fully ready yet, so. Can you tell us when we, you said September 1st seems to be a big date, but then beyond that, are you telling us that all the punchless stuff's gonna be done September 1st, or that's gonna be a couple of months?
So if you look at, you look back, those are the major things that I pointed out, that I have a completion date by all of them, and actually, most of those are Monday. There are a couple of things that will go beyond that. Punches would depend, because for example, if we have a faucet, let's say we have a faucet that's not working right, it might take us four weeks to get a new faucet, you know, or something like that. And so that's why we, we went, we, we asked the council for the opportunity to work evenings and Saturdays all the way through October, just in case we need it. The vast majority will be done by mid-September. I think there will be probably some things that have long lead times, have to be ordered. But that's, we're gonna, they'll be working every, after 3:30, every weekday and every Saturday, not Labor Day Saturday, because it's three a weekend, but to finish those things.
Vast majority of it is September.
Correct.
Okay, appreciate it. The courtyard in particular, and that I, it's primarily, and its primary function is to be as playground. It might be, and that's what it's being used as most of the time. And even when the rec, the city rec center comes in after school, it's still primary function as a playground. So it's only, you know, secondary function is as a, as a park or a playground.
Yeah.
So I hope that we, we, you know, continue conversations with the city to make sure that the primary function is, is probably gonna serve.
Well, the, the city is probably not agree with you, and that's actually been one of the issues we've had. We, that one of the reasons, another contributor to that site, that, that courtyard taking longer to complete was we redesigned a bunch of elements because of the need to make it function more as a player. We had to go all the way to city planning, the planning director to make some changes, as recently as like about three weeks ago. So it is more than always a player, but if you look at the original design, we should not have the wall haul up, which had those poles, which were mostly an architectural feature. I think the ability of them to act as a play structure was questioned by a lot of people. It was really designed as a city park, more than a player. So we made a number of changes, out of the wall haul up. We took out one of the plants, raised planters for more play area. We reduced the number of trees, so there's more open space. And, and made those changes fairly late in the game, because there was concern by the district that that wasn't really amenable to a player. So those changes have been made. That is one contributor to why that's the last concrete that was done though, is that we were trying to, up to the last, really up till about three or four weeks ago with city planning, to get them to approve those changes. And the superintendent can speak to it, but it wasn't easy.
Starting tomorrow, the grass, I heard you say it's gonna be off-limits.
Okay, everything, everything is complete now. The grass, except the grass can't be used until Monday.
So, other than the grass, we're gonna?
We have basketball hoops and other things to roll out tomorrow. We're gonna put down some tape for four square or something to, at least in the interim, so it seems like.
There's more that we could be doing.
Yeah, yes, we're gonna do everything we can. We're overnighting, I don't know if the school had a chance, the school staff had a chance to do orange supplies for the teachers in terms of balls and things. So we have coming overnight, every classroom teacher, I believe K8, will receive a couple of different soft, uh, uh, soft, the unusual, maybe soccer balls for the area, a couple of basketballs, and a couple of smaller foam type balls. So they have some supplies, and we will, we can go into some tape on the surface. And then the PE teachers were doing some planning today to keep, make sure they keep the great new soccer football field available and free, also to allow for space for recess for now, so we let that side go ahead and settle.
So we are gonna be using the field areas for different grades.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the striping in that. The striping in that, in that courtyard has been, community comments has been an issue with the city. They don't want to put the term striping down, because now they have an event, it looks like a schoolyard. We still need to sort that out, but we can certainly do some temporary lines in there for that. That's, that's the one piece that still needs to be worked out with the city.
Other, would you notice a question?
Um, it just, it kind of, it just gets in my mind that we are, the day before school starts for these children, the city has been using the facility, but the school won't fully be able to utilize this facility. And being as though we will have K through 12, or pre-K on-site as well, it's just, it's not a comfortable atmosphere for these children to be in. We just took them from, we just took the high school children from an elementary school, and we wanted to have that sense of comfort, that sense of familiarity, for them to be comfortable on their campus, and that cannot be established when they still have till the middle of October, for their facility to be fully accessible for each individual grade to utilize. These children do not have a play structure yet, you were saying that they cannot stuff on the grass. It's just, it hurts my heart knowing that if I was in the school system right now, I would not want to come to school tomorrow, at all. It hurts my heart that these kids had to attend orientation and could not see their classrooms. It hurts my heart that this facility that we have trusted you guys with is not finished, and will not be finished for a month or so. And it's not even a question, the fact that the facility, it's state-of-the-art, but the fact that the facility is a city and schools, but the fact that the city is able to utilize it, but the school will not be able to be utilized by the community and its students for a month or so. So, it's just, it's an interesting situation that you stuck these kids in, and I want you to know that right now. It's an interesting situation that you stuck these teachers in the faculty with. And it's just, it needs to be known, because you know what? The punchless, that's fine, but it's still stuff that needs to be done that is not done. And it's just, it's a very hard predicament that you put this in.
I do, I want to, I do want to point out one thing, which I think is important to point out, is that the, there's an entire team of people, and I come to report on behalf of that entire team. And, and that entire team is responsible and accountable also, I'll point that out, okay? Do you want to say, I do want to say something, I want to say something. Is that, the, again, we had a, back about a year ago, we had a steel fabrication delay of four months, okay? It was a legitimate delay, caused by steel detailing issue complicated with the state architect. 120 days, legitimate contractual delay to the project. That would have put us at substantial completion in October, okay? That was a big issue. That was, that was legally, contractionally acceptable to the contractor, to finish in October. And I've given many updates to the board, that was, that had occurred, okay? That's two months from now. That 120-day, day with delay was reduced to about 80 days. And that was the team of people who are on the site here today, working to do that. And we did several things. We met with every subcontractor to negotiate schedule with them. We went to the city to approve Saturday work. And we also, we also negotiated with Turner Construction to reduce that delay down. We would have been looking at not even opening this semester. And that's something that I reported to the board every, for about three or four months, every board meeting that we had that delay. And the team that, I want to stand up for the team of people who's here working on the project, that team worked very hard to reduce that four-month delay, which would have been October, back to August, okay? And, you know, the thing is, that kind of, that kind of work, and I've reported on that work at every board meeting when I give my update, for the last about six, eight months, that the team has been doing those things. And those sorts of things, no one ever comments on that, about that. No one ever says, "Well, that's great that Turner subcontractors, or most of the local businesses, worked at their cost, off-hours to do, you know, work harder to make their schedule shorter." That Turner had a contractual right to claim four months longer on the schedule, and they, we negotiated that back to about two months. And the city council also allowed us to work on Saturdays to pick, to pick up time. And when those things, that's, you know, that was, that was a big, that was really difficult to make that happen. And that was a big victory for the project team and for the district, so that we could open for school. And, you know, when that kind of thing happens, it is disappointing to me personally, that we don't have anybody in the room who says, "Well, that's a great job, I'm glad that the team was able to do that." So I just want to point that out.
So, this is the question. You would like us to point out the fact that you have not finished a building. You want us to give Turner, not you, I'm not even going to say you, you would like to give your group, as you were speaking for, the satisfaction of the doubt that we are congratulating you on finishing the gym?
No, I'm not, I'm not taking congratulations, though. I'm taking, I take responsibility for, for, for the entire team. No problem doing that. What I'm pointing out is, is that it is disappointing me that, look, we have a lot, we have a bunch of things which aren't complete. We've been signed off for October, so we can start school tomorrow. I mean, that is not, that's not what everyone wants to hear. Totally understand that. But I want to point out there, is that when we did all that hard work of the last, last several months, to make that four-month delay go to a two-month delay, no one really had any, any positive things to say to the team, and that's unfortunate, that's all I'm saying.
What, do you want a medal?
I don't want a medal. I don't want a medal.
That's ridiculous. Yeah, that's all right. I know, you can ignore it. Those comments, I appreciate. You coming here and taking responsibility.
Sure.
I'll take, I'll take responsibility for it. Are there other questions, so we can move this, move this item along?
I have several questions, Mr. Baker. Basically, what do we see through attention status at Turner?
We've not received attention yet.
Sorry?
We have not received attention yet.
Okay. Secondly, I think we spoke in July, that, or even before July, that we had two IR inspectors, DSA inspectors. Did one of them come off the site, so we weren't made in hot for that?
Yeah, one came off the site, but then it's been back the last couple of weeks to do the inspections.
Okay. Another thing, have all CCDs been approved by DSA?
Yes.
Even with the ones that have just come up recently?
Yes, there's only been a couple recently. Those are all been approved, because you can't get signed, you can't get signed up by DSA to deal with CCDs.
Okay. Another thing, too, when workers come on-site, is there a separation as far as they fingerprinted, or are they working at hours that are not required to have observation by a supervisor?
So, the way it works is, first off, everyone, everyone and entire Turner team, every labor is being fingerprinted, as well as the rest of us who work on-site, who are not employees of the district. Again, the work hours approved are after 3:30 on weekdays, and 3:30 to 8 on weekdays, and 9 to 6 on Saturdays, except for the one after Labor Day. They have, there has to be, if there's one trade on-site, I mean, one trade, there needs to be a formant. If there are more than one trade, there has to be someone from Turner. That's the contractual requirement.
Another one is that, I was just looking at these, at the site here, are the slide that you have regarding installation of those mark boards, or the mark boards. I know, as an architect, I love everything to be lined up, aligned perfectly. I noticed on top of the, this is a detail issue, but are they per ADA as far as reach height? Because I know DSA is a stiffer for the height issue, and any, anytime you see 40 inches, I think that they, they're mounted too high.
They are adjustable mats. I don't know whether they go lower, though. They come out and go like that.
Something that, I don't know.
DSA did sign off on them.
Yeah, but they may have signed off on the installation, but as far as the actual height, I don't know if they had or not.
We'll check and see.
Okay. Another thing, too, you listed the punchless for all the buildings, but what about the site?
No, that's for the site, too. The punchless, the punchless have all been issued. There's still a lot of punchless work.
As an architect, I would walk away and try to punchless the site.
Yeah.
It would have been, they're not done, I'm not going to waste my time.
They did their punch, they did, IR is going to do a punchless today, just so we have that, so we have that documented. But they, and that, I've not seen that punchless yet.
Okay. And then, finally, just going back to the superintendent's making a priority for him as far as the striking is concerned, that, that color is, is, the priority is for students, and for that to be addressed and used by the city, even if it was previously planned that way, it's just inherent, space is a courtyard for use for students, and especially K through five students. It is, it is really, it is, it just is an environment, a space that needs to be developed as for students, and for city use, that's secondary. So I want you to make sure that you prioritize that with the city in your conversations.
I will continue to do so, yes.
No other questions, thank you.
Member Pat?
First of all, I apologize to people waiting to speak, but I've got a long list here, so bear with me this day, because I want to hear your comments.
Louder, please.
Yeah, so, I do want to talk about final completion. I feel like, you know, echo what member Marion said, you know, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but I just assumed that you were the head of all of this. Is that inaccurate, Mr. Baker? Doesn't everything come back to you for final approval?
Yes, that's correct.
So, I'm not thinking of the work or the efforts of the, of the team, as you call them, I'm talking about you. You know, you said you talked about these delays, and I'm fairly certain that each and every one of those delays, I said, "You've missed every deadline. What makes this one different?" And you missed the deadline again, so I'm going to ask you, if you say everything's going to be done by September 1st, what's going to make it different this time? Because you keep missing the deadlines.
Okay. First I want to say is that, 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 that when a deadline is not made by Turner, because Turner's actually doing the building. We issue notice and notice to them, and, you know, we issue notification, and it's reviewed by district council, so that notice goes to them. Okay, that, that goes to them.
Right.
In terms of September 1st, we're not, we're not going to make September 1st, which is when the paperwork is in, and, and punchless completion, and the warranty period, the leverage on Turner at that point is the warranty period can't start, does not start until they're done, so they, the two-year warranty period doesn't start. So that just kicks the warranty period further and further.
So, I guess, again, I'll go back to final completion. So, Turner comes to you and says, "Hey, we need until October," and I think it's a perfectly reasonable thing for them to say. And just using the numbers you brought this evening, that you called that four months away, it can be significantly longer than that, because again, we were supposed to be in May, not July, but let's just call it that four-month delay. What you're saying to us today is that, "Hey, we didn't do it in four months, we knocked it down to two, but that really is three." Is that accurate?
No, it's a little, I happen to talk to the exact dates.
Yeah.
We did have three weeks of legitimate weather delays, okay? So, that, the, the contract dates were May 1st and June 1st, or actually, it was May for substantial, June for final. So those went out three weeks each, due to weather. And then, the steel delay, which would have taken those dates and taken that four months beyond that. So that would have been approximately, that would have been approximately May 20th and June 20th, out all the way to September 20th and October 20th, for substantial and final. So, correctly, can we, we ended up, that 120-day delay ended up being about 81 days. So the July 25th date was 69 days, and we were about 12 days beyond that.
So, last week at the city schools meeting, and I can't, I'm getting into minutia here, but I, we sat at the city schools meeting, and we talked about final completion. You talked about the sod, and you said, "Oh, that's going in tomorrow, and I think you're going to walk on it right away." So, now it's going in, and that tomorrow was the 19th, here we are at the 24th. So, again, were you misinformed, or just didn't know?
That was, I was, I was, I'll tell you exactly what happened. That is what we were told by Turner. The next day, the landscape architect issued a change to the sod, because they changed their mind and wanted to go with a different sod at the 11th hour. We ended reversing that decision, so we could put the sod in, but that's why the sod was in order. And that was, that was the landscape architect acting on there, and so I want to change the sod. And we rejected the change, but by that time, took us a couple of days, that's why the sod went in, that's why it's why it's going in today.
Okay, and you also said the play structure would be done, and I see that it's up, but it's not going to be usable for a while. I want to be clear, that's, can your play structure, it's not for the other grades. So the same situation, you said it was going to be going up the next day.
That's what I was told, and it's taken longer to settle.
Got it. Because they hadn't even started on Friday, which was the next day, correct? Okay. So, also, the road and parking lines were going to be going in. You know, I remember, remember Donahue asking very specifically about parking. So again, you said, "Oh, yep, that's happening, and I don't see lines, and I don't hear lines in the parking lot," and you described it. So again, misled, misinformed, that's what I, that's what I, again, these are dates that the contractor gives, and I report those, okay?
When they don't meet those dates, we give them notice, and we have got a whole bunch of documentation that they did not make that date. With, apart from the striping, as a matter of fact, actually what happened there is we, that was going to be done on Monday, Tuesday, it was going to go today, he said, "We don't want to use striping and not finishing up. We'll go ahead and have the lots be used, so we can stripe on Saturday, because it made more sense functionally to do that." But those are the dates. I will tell you this, Mr. Pat, is that every, every date that I, whenever, if Turner gives me a date to report to the board, I ask them, "Are you sure?" They say, "Yes." I report that date. So that's, that's, that's the date that kind of, they give the other ones who actually control the construction. When they don't meet that date, we document that, and let them know that they did not make that date.
Yeah, I, I just see a pattern here. Impressed that you continue to go back and trust Turner. That's good. I want to talk about the rec area, comes to play area. Again, correct me if I'm wrong, but you presented multiple times to this board that it increases the play space for kids over any age, and there's a lovely image where this play space behind us is highlighted as more square footage. This was the, I mean, this was the drumbeat. I remember, remember, Apple making that point very vividly, I remember Mr. Rubio making that point very vividly, and I remember you making that point very vividly. So at what point in time, why are we hearing this at the last minute, or why am I hearing it? I know I get left out at a lot of your meetings. Why am I just now hearing it, that, "Oh, well, we're kind of trying to reclaim it as a rec space." Were you just wanting to sell us on it as a rec space?
No, that's not-
As a play space, or what?
The square footage area, that's, that's actually looking at the actual square footage of the anti-ages, which is the space. That's just, that's just-
They were looking at the play area, that's-
Play area, that's, that's a diagram that the architects put together that shows the different surfaces.
Yeah, okay.
The, the, that's not, the square footage is not the issue we're talking about. The issue we're talking about earlier is what, how that space was designed. And the district and many other, the district has felt for the last few months that that space is not designed to support a player, that it's really, it's not, it doesn't have enough open play space, that never, that didn't have a play structure, because again, the wall hall was added back in May, and that it was, and that it was not functional as a play space. So the function of the space has now been changed, so it can function more as a play space. And that's been, that's, the city has kind of begrudgingly gone along with that. But that's, I'm talking, what I'm talking about is the actual design, it's not the actual area square footage. That remains the same.
Yes. It really does matter what the design purpose is, but we'll move on, because I got a long list here. You mentioned the fencing around, we're totally fenced in, and you used a lovely phrase, that site safety is our number priority. I think it's more important, is what you said. I disagree with that, I think our kids are more important than site safety, but, and on that note, with the fencing being wrapped and it being chain-linked, do we have emergency exits that kids can get out of during the day that aren't just at the entry points, but when they're on fields, and things like that?
Yes, all of the code compliant exit gates are in place, and have been reviewed by the DSA inspectors and have been approved. We have all those exits are in place.
That wasn't the question I asked, I mean, with the chain-linked fencing in place, DSA signed off on, okay, there's chain-linked fences here, there's a gate for kids to get out if there's an emergency.
Yeah, all the gates are installed at those fences.
All right. Parking on the road over here, is, are going to be equipment parked there?
No.
Tomorrow, and I saw a lot of guys stoned, I think they were.
All the, all the equipment, all, every, Turner's been directly, all the equipment, all tools, all vehicles, everything are out of here. There are some, there are some bags of landscape material that we've requested be in places which are not, which are not taken up, taken to parking spaces. They're still working on that right now.
Because member Donahue was very clear about wanting parking there, with the people coming in tomorrow, so. And can you explain- Um, and can you explain the trip fix, and why didn't we, we knew it was a trip hazard, why didn't we label it as such? So two things, what's the fix, and why wasn't it fine?
So, the issue there is that, that we pointed out, and we were concerned about it, the architects, the architects were adamant that it would be fine, and the inspector said it would be fine. We said, you got to go with them, I wanted to direct them to look at a solution that would eliminate that, that step. And, um, but it had been signed up for occupancy by the inspectors. I just want to point out that we pointed out this is good, I agree that should we have, should we have considered putting in a barricade there? Probably, however, yeah, it is, there's a stripe on the top there, actually.
It has to be developed.
No, the stripe, the stripe is, the stripe is a code requirement for a stripe at the edge of the road, with the stuff, and it's that.
No, there's a piece of blue painter's tape there.
There should, there's a dark thing, oh, anyway.
There's a piece of blue painter's tape there, and have, have a, a full moon mark. Oh, so what's the fix?
The fix is actually to cut the concrete out there, and ramp up a code compliant, it will be just a more slope sidewalk, compliant with ADA, no railings required to eliminate that step.
Um, okay, so you talked about being able to take eye contact, and I know it was a late day, and we rushed to a box, but I was walking around classrooms, teachers dropped me in. And one of the first things I noticed is nobody had swept the floors of construction debris and dust, so prior to moving in, prior to occupancy, it's a problem. Wouldn't that have been something that we should have requested of Turner to go and clean the floors?
They did, they did, they did a final clean that was part of the punches that had been done before then. Um, I'm not sure the exact area you're talking about.
Classrooms.
Uh, yeah, I, I, the exact area of dust, I'm not sure where that was, because we walked when they were cleaning the floor to the furniture end. The, uh, all I can say is right now, we've got the janitorial staff cleaning classrooms also, and Turner's been cleaning of the corridors today.
Who's going to be overseeing that, make sure that we work around student activities? Because we're going to have students on campus after school, and I know, um, I just don't have a lot of faith in the people who've been overseeing this so far. So I want to make sure that we have somebody who's in charge to sort of, before Turner leaves, comes on.
Right, what we, every, every day at three thirty, we'll, we'll, we'll plan beforehand with the city and district to make sure we understand what the, what the uses are. And then every day at three thirty, um, Swinerton and Turner will meet with the city and enter the district, and go over what those uses are, to make sure you stay out of these areas till a certain time. On a daily basis, we'll meet and understand what that schedule is going to be, to make sure that we're not working, not impacting any after-school uses.
Can you explain the purpose of the one-way windows and parent spaces upstairs of this building?
Uh, I cannot, that, I would have to defer to DSK for that.
Yeah, please, I'm curious, why make one-way windows?
I, I don't know, I was going to say the same thing, it was clear we have to ask the architects. I, I wasn't involved in design over the years, community infrastructure, so I don't know what they're doing. Maybe I'm a little bit of a contemporary thought, or something, I'm not sure.
It seems like we have an enormous amount of design errors, violations, is there recourse to that?
Good question, there are, there are, uh, there are some sections in the agreement, I'm not familiar with this, with this agreement, because we executed it before we came on boards, it's a little bit different than other companies. But, as I said, it does have more ability to recourse than most, most architects do, it's had. Um, to answer your question specifically, it talks about negligence, which is not commonly used in architecture agreements, it's more of a legal term. Um, so, we'd have to go through a process of determining that. Uh, there is some recourse for, for, for what's called negligent, as opposed to, um, um, this kind of standard coordination of completing drawings. And so that, we have to discuss with district council on that issue, which way we have done, Dr. Rubio and I have had an initial discussion about that, we need to do that a bit more, because, especially with, especially with, in the most recent months, there have been a lot more of that stuff than we had earlier, particularly sites. There have been more, we had much, much less of those sorts of issues, we want to build it proper, but the site has been an issue. And as we've installed that site, we're going to lose things to come in.
Uh, this was from, who would be, uh, why are we overnight involved? We didn't order them at the beginning of the summer?
Member Pat, uh, I am doing everything I can to try to support the schools, support the teachers, support the principals. Uh, it was unclear to me if that equipment was being ordered or not, so I went ahead and did that, and alerted the principals today. They may have, maybe the teachers have equipment for last year. I'm, I'm just taking actions in any area I can, where I think we might have them, I'm sorry.
All right. Um, yeah, I want to hear from the teachers, I'm curious, and I'm, I'm very concerned that we're not going to be open tomorrow. I don't know that I feel safe, I don't know that, I want to, I want to follow what Brittany said, I would not send my child here tomorrow. And, that's a challenge for me, and I would ask that if you could do the same, so, I think I'm done. Mr. Apple, the floor is yours.
Thank you, a public comment on this side. Oh, thanks, cool. Um, I appreciate the time to make a comment. My name's Tom Salvatore, I'm the music teacher. Uh, I was also last year's, um, teacher of the year. Um, and I want to make quick comments about, um, the room. Um, first I want to say everybody, especially the teachers, have been working really hard. I have been impressed by the, um, people doing work here on the, on the staff. Um, there are some problems with the ICE for our students with the room. The first thing is there's no sink currently in the music room. A sink is not a wishless item, it's a complete necessity. Students need to be able to clean their instruments, their spit valves, their spit falls on the ground. And I need students to be able to clean their instruments in the time we matter. And if a student needs to clean their instrument now, they need to go out to the bathroom to clean it, where other things happen in the bathroom, we can't monitor them, they're missing class time. And, I, you know, other things happen in the bathroom, they're taking something off, and they can lose a piece of their instrument, because I'm not there. So, for the, so for sanitary reasons, for instructional reasons, for the students' good, it's not a wishless, it's a necessity. I understand that, like, one can't just pop up, and I understand I'll have to wait some time, and I'm okay with that. But I guess I, I just want to say, I'm here just to say that, we all know that February doesn't roll by, and we're like, oh, this thing didn't happen, no one told me. So this thing is an absolute necessity. The other thing is, I feel like the architects never talk to me about where, which way the room should face. If, please, um, when you get a chance, take a step, step behind the curtains, um, and you will see that there's a wall with a clock on it. That is without a doubt the beginning of the room, the, the front of the room. Every, um, teacher that I've walked in and showed us would say, agree with me, that's the front of the room. The whiteboards and our new technology smartboards were put on the sides of the room, so if I set us up to, in the front of the room, all the students would not have access to be able to see the Prometheus board. So, I, when I communicated this to Nimmo and to Elizabeth, they said, well, that's where it's going to stay. And the message that I, the way I took it as a teacher, was that it's okay to, for, it's okay that not all the students have access to it. And that, that's the way it's been communicated to me so far. And when you go in, you'll see that I had communication with people since, since last week about the whiteboard issue, and you'll see that there's no whiteboards in the front of the room. The other thing is that front of the room, I measured from one outlet to the, to the other, and there's over sixty feet of wall space without an outlet. And this is very problematic, since I have electronic instruments that need to be plugged in. I'm hoping to have a piano, uh, after-school piano lab where I can plug in, um, pianos easily, but when there's over sixty feet of wall space without plugs, that will make it very difficult, imagining locking the section cords, and that'd be very problematic. Um, the last, uh, I'm really glad that, I, I don't know anything, I'm really glad you gave a clarification about the partition. The way I understand it, the partition won't be built, installed until after three thirty, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, because I had a nightmare of like, students in here while partitioned, construction is going on, um, and.
Out of time.
Okay, I really appreciate the time, thank you.
First then, there is a high school bathroom for the music room?
Is there a question that needs me answering?
Yeah, what?
Okay, okay, is that okay?
Yes.
Um, there are restrooms right through that door right there.
Those are high school restrooms?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Camille Paris, I'm a second grade teacher, and it isn't obvious, I'm a person who can go for this. Uh, thank you very much for addressing the issue in the front of the K eight building. It is definitely a hazard. I didn't, and, and, just to clarify where I actually did trip, there is a one and a half inch step that gradually gets bigger. And I, um, was told that they were planning on putting a ramp on the area where I actually walk, not anticipating it to, to, to be more like a four-inch step. Um, and so that's where I, and there is absolutely no, there was nothing there to, to suggest that this was a step that I needed to be careful of. And the, the tape that's on there, now I was told Marcia Farhan put down, after I tripped, so that people would be more aware of the, the step down. But thank you for fixing that. Obviously, if I can do it, I'm, I'm not an accident-prone person, anybody can do it. And we have small children supposedly coming to school tomorrow, which is absolutely unbelievable to me. Um, this school is a construction site, we do not have curri, we've been told we have curriculum, but no one knows where it is. I asked for pencils and crayons today, and I was told that nobody knows where they are. Um, you know, we're all making do, and we're all ready to start the day tomorrow with, with students or without students, but I'm urging you to consider doing a robocall and canceling at least until Monday, so that you can make this campus more state, safer for students.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Johnson, I teach fourth grade, I've been teaching in Emoryville for nine years, and, uh, I've never experienced anything like this. We are not ready to open, we don't have our curriculum, we don't know as teachers where these access, these emergency access points are, uh, to the gates. We haven't received a tour, we didn't, it was canceled today, just for the record. I would also like you to know that we just got in here on Thursday. I'm pregnant, I've been working for like twelve hours, eight hours a day, since Thursday, coming in, trying to get my classroom together. And Elizabeth said, she told us in the meeting at N E A's, that we would all have help, uh, unpacking, that they would have people helping us unpack. I had to beg for help, and the, the, the moments that I received help, it wasn't that substantial. And so, uh, I just, and, and I'm still not ready. I don't even have my textbooks, so I can't say that I've even planned my first day. Uh, our classrooms are not ready, I think it's very convenient that the classrooms that were shown, you, we didn't take pictures of all of the classrooms, so that you can have a real picture of what's going on behind these doors. In addition to that, you know, we have wires hanging out of the, uh, the, there's supposed to be a ceiling fan, so that we can have ventilation, there's no ventilation, I'm trying to talk fast. Uh, you pointed out that it was clean, the classrooms are clean. I was in, I was sick when I left after the first day, literally sick, I can't afford to be sick. And there was white sit all over our walls, the floor had some sort of, I don't know what this stuff was, but it was like piles of, like sawdust or something, that I went out and bought a broom and a mop, you could walk in my classroom, and if you want to volunteer, I'd love it, I, or any of the Turner people, come on and clean it, because I had to do that. Um, and that was while my things were, I was told to unpack and get my classroom prepared. Um, so anyhow, with that said, as a teacher, I can't say that I can't meet my deadline, oh, I didn't meet my deadline. If school starts tomorrow, our children aren't ready, and, but I have a deadline that I have to meet, so I'm going to be here till whenever I get kicked out tonight, and I stay here, because you all need to know, we are not ready. Some of you have children that go to this school, I wouldn't bring my child to this school tomorrow. It's not safe, we have teachers being hurt, it's not okay. There's equipment around here, things, it's just not ready, it's not okay. I have a ton of other things I want to say, but I'm sure I'm, am I out of time?
We have forty-five seconds.
Oh, I have forty-five seconds, all right, yes, okay, so let me keep going. Um, oh, no storage, no play, no areas to play, no bathroom access. We were talking in a meeting today, we don't know where our children are going to go to the bathroom, because they're going to be out on this football field, and apparently maybe use the gym, use the bathroom inside of the gym, where high school students may be, we don't know, and we were told that our little ones are not going to be interacting with the high school, and so, we're all confused about that. There was a mention of porta potties possibly being out there. Um, so, we don't know what's going on, even when there is, uh, the, when this area opens up, if it opens up, we were told, we sat down in meetings at N E A's for years, talking about what, and they were little meetings that I think were really just facades, um, because clearly this isn't meant to be a play area. If it was, we wouldn't have this debate right now with the city and the school. So anyhow, we were asked as teachers what we needed, and I don't believe we were heard. Um, we don't have storage in our classrooms, not enough, we had to give up storage, so thank you for listening.
Uh, my name is Marion Coach, I will be teaching first grade this year, and I, um, started my teaching career here at N E A's, I'm a student teacher, and I will be going to my second year here. I have been trying really hard to stay balanced, and see things as the cup, the, our glass sample. But, uh, this morning, we were given the Williams Act to post up in our classrooms, and I'm just infuriated, I don't have curriculum, I don't have my laptop. I'm not ready. And the first days of school are so important. And I feel like we're being sent for failure. Teachers are, are, are being asked to do yard duty the first several days, someone said the first two weeks. So I will be going from eight-thirty until lunchtime with no bathroom break. I don't know where bathrooms will be for, for my kids. And then, on top of that, after lunch, I go from eleven-fifty to three PM with no break, with my students for over three hours. I just, I think if we start school tomorrow, you are sent news of failure.
I agree, Miles TK. I agree with most of what was said. Um, it feels like so unfinished. Um, I have the smallest of our kids, I am the TK teacher, so I think I have one of the biggest concerns about tomorrow, and what's going to happen with our kids, and the bathroom situations. Moreover, the idea of feeling safe, we don't know where everything is. If something was to happen on this campus tomorrow, we don't know the exits, we don't know where to go, uh, we don't have an emergency plan, uh, it just doesn't feel safe. Everything that Ms. Perez fell, she wasn't the only one that fell off of that spot. I fell, other people fell off the spot. There's other things that we don't even know, like she said, the wires are hanging from the ceiling in my room, um, there's containers of things open, like, I don't know, some kind of little gift thing. I mean, I'm, I'm grateful, I, I want to say that, I am grateful. I, I, I think this school site is beautiful, I, I love my classroom, I, I put in, you've given us thirteen hours of pay, but I think every teacher at this school site has been here since you've allowed us to come on campus. Some of us have left here anywhere from eight to nine o'clock at night. Or, but, I think we got in on Wednesday, and Wednesday I was here up to six-thirty, the next night I was there until seven-thirty. All of us are doing that, and, and we are not asking for anything additional, but we're asking to be respected. Uh, we came back into our classrooms before we even had an opportunity to come into our own classrooms. We, I felt totally disrespected, and I've said it to the people, to the rec people, is that, you come in before we even get in our classrooms, and you take one of our largest storage closets, and this is supposed to be our classroom. And we don't even have enough space to put our things away. My puppet area is, is full of boxes that I've just shoved up against the wall and covered up, because I have nowhere to put things. And yet, we're having to give up another space, a, a, a closet space. We all talked about it as a staff, and we said, if they're in there on a port, uh, uh, um, what do you call it? We all talked about it as a staff, and we said, if they're in there on a port, what do you call it? They're there in the afternoons, why can't they have portable carts that they're pushing to take from point A to point B for what they need? That is our classroom, but we're not being respected in the sense that our needs are being honored. And now we hear that we're an afterthought as far as what's provided for our student on the playground. That's just not right, it doesn't feel warm and fuzzy, it doesn't feel respected. And I know that I give 100%, and I know that every member of my staff as a whole give 150% each and every day. And that's all we ask them to do is to be respected, and we want our children to feel safe, and we want to be safe. And that doesn't feel like it's what's happening right now.
Hi, I'm Malcolm Wong, I'm one of the K teachers, and I agree with quite a lot that's been said, but my main concern is the safety of the kids. We have two PD days. And in the middle of the first PD day, the freshman development day, when the administrators were taking questions from us, I just had an image of what was gonna happen on the first day, and I thought somebody's gonna get hurt. Because, because the courtyard, the play area, is not gonna be available. We're all gonna be out on the field taking turns. A lot has happened very quickly, but there's still too many hazards out there. There's gonna be a lot of kids, they're gonna be excited. It's gonna be very difficult to prevent the determined, excited kids to go explore, dash off, when we have so many new teachers and we don't, it's gonna be hard to control them going. I've taken, I don't know, when, just when it was still light, I just took a circuit around the field, hadn't been back there yet, there's a lot I haven't seen. But on the far left-hand side, there's a long, narrow alley with things piled up there. At the very end, there's a fence bolted, but there's a gap enough so that a determined kid, they want to, they could go out and nobody will know. Along that avenue, there's benches that are pretty heavy, piled up, pretty easy, I gave one little tug, it could topple, somebody could get pinned. Along the back edge, there's a lot of scraps, wood, junk, chunks of wood, chunks of sharp metal. I took, I picked up one can of solvent, it still had a couple of lot of solvent, and it's a lot of dangerous stuff back there. Along this other edge, there's a big wide strip, I don't know what it is, but I see what it's like, I put my hand on it and got sticky, like tar, sticky stuff, it's hard to wash off. If that's not fully set or gelled by tomorrow morning, unless it's fully barricaded off, there's gonna be kids running on that, and then they're gonna be running everywhere else in no time. And that's gonna mean going back and reworking a lot of stuff. They're gonna go right onto the field and that stuff, whatever it is, it's gonna cost a lot of money to fix all that, not necessarily a safety issue. But I'm really concerned, there's gonna be kids all over the place, and you could have a bunch of accidents. So that's my concern here, again, I agree with Audrey, putting the teachers in an impossible position to keep the kids safe. So I also suggest, even though it's this late, I'm a little bit frustrated I had to wait this long to say, I wish we had been able to say our say earlier, but I also think, put out a robocall. You're gonna have a lot of pissed off parents, but at least you won't have any accidents. I also went back and forth in my mind a little bit about mentioning this, but in my credential year, I went to Mills in 2002, 2003, and I heard about it because I was a student teacher at Mills. And that year, the first day of school, the first day on the job, Anna Cretta Allen, the principal, she had a child run over and killed, first day of school, I'm sure you guys all know that. We don't want, we don't need anything like that. There's the other issues about for interim stuff, but the safety, those kids come tomorrow, we'd be really lucky to get through the day without somebody getting hurt.
Good evening, I'm Alvin Burns, computer technology teacher, this will be my seventh year here at Emery, I love Emery. I'm just really tired, it's been a long day. But if you saw me today, and I'm sure a lot of my staff members and coworkers have saw me, rolling on the floor, doing a lot of things to reconfigure the computer lab. The computer lab's been used for a couple of days of training, but it was not put back the way that I actually arranged it for my teaching. So I'm definitely not ready, I mean, I should be at home right now, working on my syllabus more and my first day activities for the students, but it's gonna be very difficult. So I wanna dill, what's already been said, I agree with my staff members, I agree with my fellow teachers, it's just not, I'm not ready, and I know the students are not ready to come into this environment. So I believe it's gonna be very safe, I believe it's not gonna be a lot of learning going on, it's just gonna be a lot of chaos, right? So I just wanted to say my piece, thank you.
I'm Diane Mack, I have two boys in school, gonna be third in the grade. I also happen to be the PTO president, but I'm here as a parent. I'm sad to see no of the parents here, because I'm, I'm, I'm behind the school, I've been here a lot of, I'm sorry, there's, we're here. I've been here a lot of volunteer hours, and I will continue to be here a lot of volunteer hours. I will continue to advocate for all of the other parents to do the same. And anything that the teachers need, I'm gonna do my best to get some people and, you know, do what we can. But there's only so much that the volunteers can do, there's only so much that the parents can do, as I implore you to delay this, this is, I'm going back and forth, I'm not sure what I'm gonna do with my kids tomorrow. I love the school and everyone in it, and I understand the bigger picture, I see all of that too. But the safety of the kids and the issue of the readiness of the teachers, and it's become an emotional issue, and I really, you, you as a board, need to understand it and see it, and put that effort into being behind the people and being behind the students. And also, on a different note, I'd like to see more of a fight between the school and the city. Yes, this is a joint effort, but this should be a school first before it's for public use. I've been in Emeryville a long time, 12, 13 years, my husband longer. And I've seen this from the beginning, and while I, I love the changes, I love the building and the site, there is just so many of the things that we're, the city is not remembering that this is, our kids come first, we're the future. And pushing our school to start tomorrow is not putting our students first, it's not putting our educators first, and the school board, and the city, and all the powers that be need to think about that and make that a priority, thank you.
Good evening, board members, Dawn Turner, teacher librarian. First, I want to acknowledge our work together and thank you for acknowledging my part in our work together. It has been a good ride for five years. We don't always agree on things, but that is part of the process, and I appreciate the work that you do as well. You know, I'm going to, of course, echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I have never been in a situation where you have an active construction site and you plan on bringing children. I watched on the news that Burlingame opened their first school in 50 years, and those grounds look pristine. And we want that for our students, we don't want anything less for our students. No, the teachers aren't ready, how can we, we did not have equal access to our classrooms. Some people's classrooms were used as staging areas, and so they couldn't get their classroom together. People tried to get in at all day, all hours of the day, and because of, you know, different usages, they couldn't get into their classroom. So sometimes there was painting issues with the steps, there are all kinds of issues. But what I want to point out is, I met with Dr. Rubio every month, and I brought up concerns every single month. And I said to him, I don't know a construction job that ends on time, I don't know of one. They all fall behind, and do we have a plan B? I kept asking that, do we have a plan B? I don't understand the rush to open tomorrow, when we could have pushed this back until after Labor Day. Certainly you guys knew by July 15th that there was still substantial work to be done. And so I feel like there's plenty of blame to go around, but that, we are always bearing the brunt of the problem. It always falls back on students and teachers. And so something needs to be done to prevent students from entering this site tomorrow and the possible problems, thank you.
Hi, Mark Davis, again. You just heard from, and I'm not even gonna use the word teacher, these are professionals. And I hear, I'll tell you lip service to how we respect our teachers as professionals. And they're giving you a professional opinion, their business is children, their business is education. Listen to them, they know what they're talking about. They don't come up here every year and go, hey, we need to postpone school, cause I really gotta, you know, day at the beach tomorrow. This is not about that. I don't have, people just don't have the materials to conduct a class. So my question is, what is your expectation? I don't want to hear everybody patting themselves on the back, because we went in and we managed some classes that we basically BS that way through, because we don't have the materials to conduct the classes we would. So it's, it's, it's a joke, and we're begging you to please listen and consider, what is there to lose? We have a lot to gain. We have, this is a fabulous facility. And also we're saying this, just let's make it safe, polish it up, and then let it roll. I don't think anybody would question that, it's a great facility. But tomorrow, it's 8:30, I still don't have books in my room. And those books have to be numbered, because of the Williams Act. Gotta do it all by hand for econ, government, world history, US history. And I got kids coming tomorrow. Help us.
I think there's one more, a copy copy.
Well, Mr. Rogers, Steve, I want to thank you, thank you very much.
Yes, I did, I would like to inform you, I shouldn't have talked to you. I would like to encourage the board and invite the board to actually walk the hallways of the school, and I would give you to see what the state of the school is like. But I really, I don't want us to talk about it, I would like us to be about it. And I would like some action to take place, so actually, I'm inviting you to really go walk through the school and look at it, just walk through it, and look at every classroom, not just the stage room, but really look in every room, and assess it and say, can I really honestly see children walking in this building and navigating themselves throughout this building? When I make mention of the buildings, I mean, the facility is gorgeous, facility, that word to me sounds like an institution. It's very colorful back here. If we are expecting our young children to play out here, I know the city, that we have this agreement, and I believe in ECL, like, I believe in children, I really believe in that. But if our students are gonna play here, on the weekdays, and the city wants it open for the weekend, if we're not encouraging a prison yard here, where kids play on concrete and it's gray and it's enclosed, and they don't, I mean, there's bars, and there's beams, and there's mesh, and that's great, but there's no color. And there's imperants with the equipment that they're gonna use, and I'm not saying this to be critical, I'm just saying, we have to be aware of what we're putting in our children's heads. We want them to have fun and to play. I'm a grandfather, I wouldn't let my grandchildren play on concrete and there's no color, I wouldn't do it. So this color back here is amazing, one of the parents said to me, Mr. Rogers, we can see that you guys built this one in high school. It's beautiful from here, I know the big kids are gonna love all of this, but all you have is gray on that yard. So I really want to encourage, encourage the board again to take a tour and look around. But we really need to get with the city on this play area for our children, we're talking about TK children, not four. Four. Playing on concrete is an issue with that, enough, but no color, because we want skateboarders to come in here on a weekend and skateboard? And I know we shared with martial arts class, that's the only people that we're seeing using the NEH facility, and we need to come up with a name, so we don't say facility anymore. Is this a school, or just building instructors? Cause facility is very institutional sounding. So if we are sharing our school with the city, and again, this isn't to be critical, but this is just to say, we need some color out here, and we need to make this suitable for children. And the skateboarders can skate on color, because I know we're gonna have all kinds of amazing concerts in the space, right, with the stage, but we need to get some color out there, but please take a tour, thank you.
Okay, so I heard Mr. Baker from Swinerton talk about something that's not done yet and gotta be fixed, and I came up with what, I mean, there's a lot of things that came under that category. But he said that it would be done, I quoted him, I wrote it down, it would be fixed, quote, "at our cost", meaning that the district won't have to pay, presumably. But that's sort of like, that statement, that's sort of like a giveaway, our cost. Whose cost is he talking about, Swinerton's or Turner's? I think he's talking about Turner, because Swinerton's not gonna pay for fixing something. But the fact that he's interchangeably talking about Swinerton and Turner, sort of, you know, shows, it's sort of let the cat out of the bag with that statement, it's like, Swinerton doesn't work for the district. Swinerton and Mr. Baker were paying over a million dollars for his services, but what he really is doing is working for Turner. I mean, we have seen this for the last, you know, two years. So we paid a million, you know, over a million bucks, and what we got is an apologist for Turner. And, you know, as the one, the person that's gonna pay, the end, ending up paying the million, I, you know, it's pretty, I'm kind of incensed. I think we shouldn't, should not have hired Swinerton, we should have hired somebody that's actually gonna represent our interests. I walked around the, never mind the safety issues, I walked around the facility here, sorry to use the term, looking at the fit and finish, I'm in the business, and it's really bad, it looks like a rush job. Looking at the welds, they're horribly done, the weld grinds are really bad. And, you know, this is supposed to last for 50 years, and so like the last two months, everything just gets really rushed, and it's, the fit and finish is, you know, very bad. And so we didn't pay for bad fit and finish, we paid for good, good quality work, and we're not sitting here, sitting here. But never mind all that, what I really want to talk about is, you know, respect your teachers. I hope you listen to them here, I mean, that would be sort of a new paradigm, were you to do that. You know, what they're telling you is that the site is not safe for children here, in their professional opinion, and I think you should honor that, and I don't think it is safe for children, I wouldn't put my, my child here tomorrow. I think clearly you're gonna have, you're gonna have to delay the opening. Now, one thing that we hear from Mr., I've heard from Mr. Rubio, Mr. Affeld before him, you know, Mr. Simon, a lot, all the time. When we come up here and I, parents would take issue with the board policy, we would get lectured, very commonly, still do, about how what you do is in the best interest of the children. So, you know, it's really irritating, it's really irritating, because what you're implying is what, what we're suggesting is not in the best interest. It's really irritating because what you're implying is what, what we're suggesting is not in the best interest of the children. And you should operate in the best interest of the children tomorrow and delay the opening of this facility. Sorry for the term.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent, I had a couple of questions for you. Uh, we, I heard, I heard a number of comments saying that folks' curriculum materials can respond to that. It doesn't concern me.
Yes, you're starting school and we have to have the materials. The materials, as the audience clearly explained earlier as well, are noted. Many of the materials, in particular, one that comes to mind is the math curriculum, was copied, uh, multiple times first by Office Depot. Those are in many boxes. And so, those materials are here on the site, but they are not currently organized. So we need to get those organized, get those after the teachers right away. So we have that curriculum, but we need to get it into classrooms immediately. So we're working on that right away.
When is that? Is that gonna happen by tomorrow morning?
Uh, no, realistically, I don't think we will be able to get it started until before the end of the day tomorrow.
So that's math, they won't have?
That's primarily, that's primarily, uh, the math, copies of math. That's right. They have, they have, I suspect they have their, um, some of the materials from last year, the teacher materials.
No.
Okay. So, um, and, and, and I'm not aware we have it or not. Mrs. Miller-Paxton, if you're gonna do that when you sit next to me and be unprofessional and disrespectful, it's not gonna be helpful for our parents.
I'm sorry. Gross incompetence shocks me. If you don't know the materials the teachers have, don't be surprised that I respond.
Okay. But if you're gonna call me grossly incompetent or whatever, it's gonna be...
If I can just interrupt.
It is a problem.
Let's, let's have a public meeting. And I'm, I have the floor and asking some questions. I think this poses a need to, to, uh, respect and appreciate. Uh, the, um, the issue of the city, sort of coming in and taking the certain covers. I mean, I, I think we do need shared space. We can figure out shared space. So I guess, you know, my response on that is, you know, they, they, uh, they can't have most of the space or the first choice of space, but figure that out and, and, um, maybe some of its cards, I don't know. But it's that. You know something to be worked out? And, and I'd like, I'd like you to work on it.
We, we are, we are working through it. The city has always, uh, it's part of the plan of the district. It's always been that all the cabinets belong, that they're, they're in every room, just the back, it's one or two rooms. I believe there are two large tall cabinets. The city, uh, has always asked to have one of those, and it's always a part of the agreement with the district. All the lower cabinets belong to the teachers. Uh, we do, we are procuring additional cabinetry and shelving for all the classrooms because it is quite clear from the teachers' feedback that we need more shelving. So I've communicated to the teachers that we're getting the shelving as quickly as we can.
Can I interject a little bit quickly? President Athol. I feel like, given the late hour, the pressing issue right now is not cabinet space, but is opening tomorrow.
I'm sorry.
It's the study of the kids.
Yeah.
Why are you talking about this?
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
I, I will ask you to leave, Mr. Paxton.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Let's have a civil conversation.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And I'm asking a question that, that, yes, that is on my list of things to get to.
You don't think it's prudent?
I'm sorry, Mr. Paxton.
Yeah.
I'm speaking, and I have the floor.
Let him speak. He had, he asked me a question.
Yeah, I just worry about getting ahold of parents. You know? No, you don't, but that's okay.
I'm, no, because I'm asking.
Well, they're talking about doing a robo-call. You got, it's nine o'clock.
This board does not have the authority or ability to take an action on this item. This is an information item. And it has not been noticed for it.
I'm sorry.
You, if I can, no.
Point of procedure.
I'm talking to the superintendent.
I'm sorry, I may be taking an emergency action. We have an emergency, we can take an emergency action.
The superintendent, um, can make, can take administrative action.
And we can direct him to do so if he can take a recess. So he has time to call the parents.
I'm asking Superintendent, based on what you heard tonight, what is your, uh, opinion as to, uh, whether or not the school is in a safe condition? And whether or not the teachers are gonna be ready tomorrow? And whether, whether or not we should be opening?
I can respond to that. I wanna appreciate first, this is my response, that teachers have a lot of anxiety about starting the school tomorrow. I think that, I know most of the people in the audience talked about, and they said it very accurately. Their opinion was that they didn't feel like the school was ready or that they were ready. I know many of the teachers have walked up to me and said they are ready and they're excited. They're happy to be here. We have another sixteen employees who aren't in the room with us right now. And we have about seventy to eighty new students who are, are new enrollees, not kindergarten. We're gonna probably break some of our enrollment records. So, and I will tell you to answer your question. I believe we are ready, as, as ready as we can be with the circumstances. And I think we'll be able to operate and function effectively. And I would go further to say that it would be awfully disrespectful to our parents, families, and the violation of that code, uh, which requires for today's notice to do otherwise. So, uh, in my opinion, as just Superintendent, I would say, yes, we are as ready as we can be under the circumstances. And I think all of our teachers are doing their best. They're all, we've been working hard. We've all been working hard. And, uh, uh, you know, many times I think this is an issue of mindset regarding dealing with this particular situation. If there was anything I believe was going to be unsafe to students, for any of our students coming tomorrow, our parents, our families, our teachers, I would say otherwise right now.
Did you hear what the teachers said? This is about your embarrassment. So, because you don't wanna be embarrassed.
Mr. Donahue, I'm fine being embarrassed, Mr. Donahue. I, I'm okay with that. But the right now, I'm gonna ask for my professional opinion. And there are many opinions that should be respected. There are many opinions in the room. And there are many teachers who aren't here with us right now, who are probably in their classrooms now, still preparing. And so, uh, I would, but, uh, I'm telling the board, I've been asked the question. My response is that we are planning for tomorrow, and we have EPD coming to help with the intersections. We have crossing guards. We have all of our staff, uh, out of position. And we're looking forward to seeing all our parents and students.
For the children.
So let me, let me ask the committee board if they wanna agree on this.
I would, especially as a former student, which I title none of you hold. It's just, it's embarrassing, um, sitting here trying to take a leadership position for a community that made me the individual that I am today. And to see that these kids will step foot on a school building that is not a school because it does not have curriculum to give them the proper teaching that they deserve. As a community member, as a former student, as a former trustee, I feel as though we should take the right of call of duty to go about and make sure that these kids come tomorrow to get the proper orientation that they did not have when they came to this facility, to these grounds on Monday and Tuesday. The teachers have not had the proper orientation that they needed with their curriculum. So therefore, we can allow these individuals, these families, to come tomorrow under the rules that this will be an orientation that they were neglected to have prior to them starting their first day of classes. As a former student, if I would've seen this facility, if I would've stepped foot on this facility, I would've been like, "Mom, take me home right now. Take me home, get me out of here." Knowing that I live down the street and I pass this place every single day. And I've had conversations with Mr. Baker, I've had conversations with each of us. And it's just, it's, it, I'm appalled, I'm at a loss for words. My emotions are balled up. To see that my, my friends, my family, my community members will have to be placed in this predicament. It breaks my heart. Because we are talking about having Barbara Lee and everybody coming next week. That's not the issue. The issue is that we have to make sure that these kids, these kids are coming into a classroom that has no curriculum. How is it that the school day is supposed to go on with no curriculum? The younger kids have no playground. What kids do you know that needs no playground? Joy just had to take her son to walk around. Is that what the teachers have to do tomorrow? They have to walk around with kids? We have no type of sense of family right now, and that breaks my heart. To know that I stood up here for a leadership position and now I can sit up here and we are embarrassed. But we should, can we point fingers? Should we keep on going at this little rat game that we keep on playing? We sit up here and we say that we're political and we're, we have all these high standards and we're acting like this is just a mockery. People wanna sit up here and have arguments like this is the thing to do right now? This is about the kid. This is not about conversations that you guys might have on public TV. This is not about what you guys feel is always safe, because it's not. And to know that these kids and these families will come to this facility tomorrow and probably disembowel and take their children out. To know the teachers should be left out of the room for a conversation that they just gave their time and energy to when they could've been working on their classes with no curriculum. It's heartbreaking, and I cannot express it anymore than to say that we need to actually allow these kids to have the orientation that they deserve to get to know the school that they have waited on for years. I've had this image, I've had this, this design in my brain, and it's been all kinds of discussions since I've been in like the eighth grade. I've been in eighth grade, I graduated high school, I graduated college, and this is still not done. And I'm highly recalled. And I feel as though it's just being right to the side as though, oh, it's okay, the kids can come tomorrow. If you allow these kids to come, what if these teachers strike tomorrow? Do you have a plan B? That's all I have to say.
Member, if I can just point a clarification. Is it your, uh, suggestion that tomorrow be an orientation day?
Yes, yes, that is clearly not.
Instead of instructional day?
Yes. You cannot have an instructional day with no instructions.
That parents, um, bring their children this morning?
Yes. Because nobody has had a walk, a proper walk-in. These teachers do not know where things are, the kids do not know where things are. So who's gonna direct them? It's the blind leading the blind right now.
Okay. Thank you for that question. Have a further comment?
Um, I'm clearly emotional. Like first...
Can't hear, tip your mic front.
Sorry, I'm trying not to cry. I'd like to first comment on the behavior of the, of the adults that are sitting at this table. Please let me remind you that we are all here for supposedly the same purpose and to work together to do what's best for the children of our community. So please stop speaking to each other that way. Secondly, when it comes to school tomorrow, I do not feel that this facility is safe for the kids to walk on campus tomorrow. And although I'm highly concerned about telling parents at nine o'clock at night they cannot bring their kids to school and they have to scramble for lasting childcare, I'm going to have to agree with the parents or other teachers. It's not, it's not ready, and I think we should delay until Monday. Thank you.
So, again, this was asked if they're ready to, we can take action. We clearly have an emergency situation. Any good attorney would tell you, put yourself in danger, when people are stoked, professionals come up and say it's unsafe. Um, and so, we have a safety emergency. Board policy thirty-five, sixteen, one-five. Authorized Superintendent to close the school site. Change the record. We're taking necessary actions. So, I would motion, in this emergency situation, we direct this Superintendent to take that action. And I'm looking for a second to say we close the school until at least Monday. So I'm taking, I'm making a motion. Resolution? I'm looking for a second.
I, I understand. And I'm gonna say something like that. Uh, Member Paxton?
Second.
I'll second.
Now, now we discuss.
I was, I'm ready to discuss that. But, um, let's remember Paxton and to the board. There is no safety emergency that I'm aware of. We've passed every inspection, with every elevator certified. There is nothing that I am aware of that is going to be, that, that's the safety compromise. We have, uh, our teachers are ready. Uh, well, some of our teachers don't feel ready tonight, and that's a common feeling in being square. It's very difficult being in a space. It's very difficult being in a shared space. It's a very emotional item to come into your room and never having to have the share of space that's extended. So I'm sensitive to that for our teachers, and that's very difficult. Uh, but I take it, I'm not sure that it would be, uh, I'm not sure that we can just pretend and create an emergency out of thin air and say that the board has the ability to do that.
Shame on you. Shame on John Rubio.
So, President Athol, I ask you a follow-up question.
The motion is, what exactly? Is to direct this Superintendent?
Yeah. Close the school until it's...
And will they do that without noticing the public at all? That we created out of thin air an item for agenda?
And what is, what's your authority for being able to? My understanding of the Brown Act was we had, even for an emergency, like, two twenty-four hours.
So, again, we have a safety situation, and we can retroactively notice because of a safety situation. And that is, that it's clear in the Brown Act that if there's anything that comes up, whether it's emergency, we were notified this evening of a dangerous situation. Right? And so, I'm feeling, I feel comfortable with this. What's the worst-case scenario in the Brown Act? If we have a Brown Act violation, is we have to undo our action? Given that we don't have the ability to go back in time, I'm willing to take the back for man for student's sake.
Can I say a point of order? First thing you gotta do is declare whether there's an emergency. You need four votes of the board to decide there's an emergency, and then you can make a motion to, to close the school or whatever you're gonna do.
For those of you listening at home, Mr. Paskin, we need four votes of the board to... I think we need to consult with legal counsel to figure out. So I'm gonna recess and, I'm gonna call legal counsel and figure out, including the paint, your motion, or whether, uh, Mr. Paskin's correct and we can declare an emergency for him.
I'm agreeing with him. Again, I saw the time, and I mean...
I, I, I agree with you about the time, but, um, all right. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna recess the meeting, we're gonna...
A law.
We're gonna, uh, as long as it takes to get in the meeting. All right.
It's all about protecting John Rubio's reputation. He's a better husband. He's a more responsible man. He's a better, I think, that's why he's in the system.
All right, we're, we're ready to begin. Dr. Rubio and I need to consult with legal counsel. And, uh, she ported us that we are not offering to take an action on the site. It has been noticed, this would not qualify. Her opinion as an emergency, the kind that the Brown Act would be an action on. Emergency, the Brown Act would be something, can't do that. Disaster, the same thing, fire, something, something like that. And that, that, that the Brown Act exists to inform the whole community what the actions of the public body might take. And we have not informed the rest of the community that wasn't here tonight who are expecting the school to start tomorrow. It, it probably was noticed that the school might not actually start tomorrow. Might not, there might be issues around... Might not, there might be issues around, that discussed, taking action. So we're not, not authorized to take a vote on the side of taking formal action. My, um, own view is that we have a very serious concern expressed tonight, and, uh, you know, I want the superintendent to personally review the whole campus at seven o'clock in the morning, and make sure that there are any, any certain areas that might be dangerous, are subjects exist, locked off, and, and there's no sort of solvents lying around, or sharp metal or wood or anything that, uh, students might hurt themselves with. And if we need extra staff, staff is brought in to supervise or, or guide. And we do that so that we're, you know, adults around, to keep inquisitive children from any potential dangers that might exist. Other, other than giving direction to the superintendent. We, we, we can't take action, and the superintendent is not, um, you know, authorized against them to take kind of emergency action, change the...
So, can I ask, can I make a couple of quick comments on that here? I think first and foremost, weighing in a risk management perspective, the cost of having a Brown Act violation versus a child being injured and the exposure to the district, to me, is a very easy decision to make. And the second thing is, legal advice from counsel is not binding. It is strictly their advice. So even though the council says that we don't have an emergency, and I disagree. I feel like the Brown Act says we just need a majority of board members to declare an emergency and take action. And it's an emergency not because legal counsel says so, it's an emergency because we as the board, we elected officials, declare an emergency. And then we're happy to let the courts come back and say, oops, you were wrong, you misdefined emergency. So I, once again, I call the question, and I'll restate my motion, which has been seconded. We have an emergency situation that requires us to direct superintendent to postpone the opening of school, and I would like to see until after Labor Day, but I'll say until at least Monday. So that was the original motion, I go back to it, and I ask that you call the question.
Uh, go ahead.
What time are, if school were to happen to all the time, are kids on site?
Beginning of eight.
Now, seven, eight is on, I just walked, I think, out of school.
Can you speak up?
Sorry, I said I just walked through the hallway of, of half the school, I don't think that from seven to eight is enough time to ensure that the...
What, what Jesus, man?
I, I don't, if you were gonna have kids here at eight AM, so, let me backtrack. You know, a couple, a few years ago, uh, the gym, however it is, we opened a new location. We opened a seven thousand square foot facility, we worked on it for months, and built a new gym. And then when it was supposed to open, there was, there was dozens of us, last minute stopped, and it, it, and that's just a seven thousand square foot gym, I don't think that one person could walk the space in an hour and ensure that all of the things that I, that even eyewitnesses just walking through would be taken care of. If you were going to try to have students on campus tomorrow at eight AM, it would require at least two dozen people here as early as six-thirty to walk into campus, and then be able to, I mean, there are crates, boxes of stuff that, I mean, there's a drill just the way you said these curtains, there are, I mean, the, the list is long, and you walk at once, and you'll, you'll miss twenty percent. Then you'll walk it again, and you'll catch another chunk. And you won't catch everything until the third or fourth time that you walk through.
Mr. Baker, can you respond to that, um, that, uh? What's, what's the capacity to, uh, what's five AM, six AM, it's thirty? Get a team of people here to make sure that the site is, that the site...
Frank, it's a logistical issue at this point, trying to, to get a large group here at five or six. Construction crews have been told they're staying here all night long and not be here tomorrow. Um, I've, I've not spoken with them since the recess to see what their, what their availability is. Um, it, it becomes a logistical difficulty with notifying people.
Mr. Baker, there are some people on this emergency team in terms of that we could, uh, help be walking the site.
Certainly, but not at, at seven AM. I don't know, I can't tell with the number, I can tell the number of us, that we could have two or three people here, but I, I can't, I can go pull, turn it right down, find out.
It's still not enough.
So, again?
I, I don't think there's a problem, Mr. Baker, with finding to walk the site, to completely walk it. I, I don't, uh, I think it's, it's, we, we can do that as long as, uh, we, we have some help from the emergency team, or as more than seven.
I then bring my, my stance to the table again. We allow these kids to have the orientation that they were neglected at the beginning of the week. These kids are coming to school tomorrow morning, do not know where their classes are, do not have curriculums for these classes. Therefore, it is already an orientation without you saying the words. These kids are the key for success. We are not backing their success at all. Having a couple of people come in the morning is not gonna do this, this, this place any type of justice that we need. Literally, if we cared like we said we do, we would allow these children the proper respect of giving them an orientation so that they are comfortable in this state of our facility that we're all glaring eyed about, that we all sardine and dream about, that I've sat in meetings and meetings and just different situations to make sure that future generations after myself were comfortable, because I know how it is. To have you all and to have everyone else sitting there pointing the finger like, look at Emery, look at Emery, one more time.
Brittany, do you feel that the, the facility would be ready for an orientation tomorrow?
That, that's what it is. If you have a curriculum, it is an orientation.
Would you feel comfortable with students entering the campus tomorrow?
That is better than them not knowing.
Or not comfortable with them.
I'm not comfortable either, but at the same time, there are children that are gonna show up regardless of how comfortable we are. And there are parents that are gonna show up regardless of how comfortable we are, and they're gonna be upset. As parents, would you allow any of your children to sit up here and go to this school like this? Your son is attending school tomorrow.
And, um, I wouldn't feel comfortable, and, um, I'm sure they have that, and my son is excited, and he was over here on Monday, so...
He's excited about all these mud bounds and, yeah, the little boy, I would be too. I definitely would be too.
I, I, I agree with, I agree with your comment that tomorrow, as often is the case with the very first day of school, uh, even more so tomorrow here, with the new school. That it, it can be, it should be, you just orientate students. We are not, you know, able to do anything other than, uh, to take any action to stop them. Parents and students are coming tomorrow. That, that's, that said, you know, I, I, I would have preferred we started later, and I was in favor of a different schedule.
Without me?
But then it was explained to us that the, um, this is the schedule that the teachers wanted based on the, the time here, and holidays, etc. It is what it is at this point, and we haven't had a specific directive to change. So, we're faced with, no we don't, and we can't, but I'm willing to go. I'm gonna call the question, because we're not, uh, not gonna break the law.
You can increase four.
We're not breaking the law.
Why the interest in that?
We are breaking the law.
Can I ask another question? Could we do a local call to inform parents of the current state of the campus and let them decide?
There is no decision, it's embarrassing.
If we can't, if we, if we can't actually direct them, don't run school tomorrow.
You cannot run school without a curriculum. You want these teachers to sit here and say, boom, bye, ah?
I would just say that it's not helpful, I can't. First, there is, uh, teachers have many curriculum materials, Mac is the only one I know that's taught, so just to clarify that I don't know any teacher who doesn't have any curriculum.
They just sat on the pony and told you how much they don't have.
Even Mr. Davis, uh, has his books, and the students are actually moving them up during the meeting, so, uh, I think his curriculum situation is also rectified, but let me, let me just add. So the board knows technically speaking, as we roll to SIS, uh, we do not have a place, uh, the ability tonight to local call the parents in the current SIS system, and I, I wouldn't be able to connect with all of them.
Can you send it, you know, to the, you know, the sort of case of informing parents?
Yeah, I could do, I could do that, yes.
Both are still in transition, it's legal, it's signed off, but, you know, be aware that there's a lot of finishing touches still to be made, and, you know, we, we be using these opening days to orientate their...
Yes.
And you, and, and Swin or team, whoever Mr. Baker can give for the Durver team, will be taking every step to ensure that the facility is safe.
Yeah.
I don't know what more to do directly here.
I'm, I'm still not happy with the legal advice, because I'm looking at the Brown Act right now, and it's very clear that we can, if we determine an emergency, we can discuss, I was not previous to placing the gen in a regular meeting when the body determines there's a need for immediate action, which cannot reasonably wait until the next regularly scheduled meeting. We have a need for immediate action, we cannot wait until the next regularly scheduled meeting. So, I don't know what legal advice gave you, I'm beginning to doubt its validity based on what I had heard during the recess, and I can't think of a situation where children are unsafe. It is unsafe here in the opinion of multiple professionals who work with kids. It's unsafe in the opinion of multiple plurality, a majority of board members. So we have the authority to take immediate action, we have a motion made and seconded, and I find it incomprehensible that you're not gonna call the question, and I don't even know that you have that authority to not call the question that has been, or, that the motion has been made and seconded.
I guess, remember, Pat, some of this may not help it. As far as I can tell, my best judgment is that a professional on the same team as all of us up here in that community, it would be legally impermissible, and I'm not able to correct the terms of the term, correct it. It is not legally permissible for us to vote on something without notifying the public, without a national test or approval.
There's nothing in the reg, of national tests, and it's, again, it's that need for immediate action. We have a need for immediate action, and I think the fact that you are dancing around that issue, and again, you know what, you have the ability to not vote on it. We're not asking you to vote yes. You can vote no, right? I'm just asking to call the question, and let the board, the legal authorities, make the decision.
And I'm kind of, I'm like, I put counsel's advice on us, which is, uh, this is, does not rise to the level of emergency that the Brown Act is there to push and never, uh, uh, can vote, and it's illegal. It is something ordered by national testing, it's not something in the discretion of the body. You know, I don't think the side wants an emergency. And, and so, I, you know, I don't think we need it, and we haven't noticed that, but, you know, I'm, I'm, so, no, I'm not gonna call the question.
Tyranny, looking tyrannical.
You, you used the right word there. It's advice of counsel, we don't have to follow it.
I understand your position, and, and, and we've got, I'm eager to move on, we've got other actions to take on.
Call the question.
You know.
Uh, is there any further direction that people would think we should give the superintendent for tomorrow?
Close the school.
Call the question.
Member Merrick?
Yes, I'm just looking over the situation.
Mr. Pat's, like, may I pass it?
That's just a, a situation to get out. What if, if we initiate this action, what is the plan, other than just declaring, uh, no school, or whatever? What is the plan, if we just throw out a decision or a decision to say, close it? What is the plan, because A, you can't have the contractor back on the site, and it's just a divided, weakened contract. You give him, he's still constrained by that same amount of time for it. So if you think about that, you have, you're not giving the contractor any more time. So do you mind working your dad's family, or I don't know, am I? So in order to get to a point where you want to have the school open, what are you going to do to facilitate that, or is it just formal?
I count three, if not four, contractor days before Monday, right? So I'm not giving him any more time, but I'm giving him three more days to get the school ready. I'm giving Rubio three more days to tell the teachers where the bathrooms are, where the emergency exits are, right? The applicants will show up tomorrow, because we've been dawdling since eight-thirty on this issue, but time is what we, is what we need. And so, we don't have a Plan A, let alone a Plan B, but by going and taking this action and postponing the opening of the school, we get time to develop a Plan A and a Plan B, you know?
Uh, the superintendent's opinion and Mr. Baker's opinion, uh, inspector's opinion, the facility is not an emergency situation. Respect the people, except we don't have a basis for an emergency. The reality is, uh, it's nine forty-five at night, and hundreds of parents' children are going to be lighting tomorrow morning, uh, and we, 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 we have to be ready for business. So that's the reality of it. Completely unfair that as a parent, expect other parents to be your age or child, and it's all the time. So, um, that's the situation right now. Pass public comment on the side, but Mr. Rogers, you save sixty seconds.
Yes, thank you, thanks for acknowledging me, and I'm paying for you to district my teacher. Teachers don't have a curriculum, you don't have it. How will you ensure as the board that tonight, that teachers will have the materials to teach? People can unpack and plan. Many of the rooms are unpacked. How will you ensure that teachers will have the curriculum that they need for tomorrow? How will you ensure that? And then how will you ensure that all these nails and struck things that are around the school, just go past this curtain and see the drill that's there? And see the metal that's there, see these boxes that contain that are there? Adam is one person. How will you, how are you ensuring that all of this is gonna be done by seven, because we're saying we're gonna leave here, and magically it's gonna be done at seven at the Wallford. Who's gonna work that? Has to be a human being doing that. How are you gonna ensure that students will have their books tomorrow? Mrs. Mack moved some of the books, she knows where they are, but they're, is my, are they in classrooms?
Nope, no, copy rooms.
They're not in classrooms? At the Annegates School. So how are you gonna ensure that in the mornings when these children come, they will be here in droves? And teachers are playing, we can't do games and icebreakers all day. How are you gonna ensure that we have books in the classrooms with teachers standing up? Ready in the morning, numbered, and ready to be issued? How are you gonna ensure that?
I'm, I'm just concerned, I'm concerned because the email makes it like a simple task to the parents for that, I feel like it's a, to do that, so I, I would prefer just to continue on, complete our job, and I believe it's all that, and the longer you process it, the longer, the more, uh, I feel like they're disrespecting the parents, so...
We're already disrespecting them, it's too late for that. Let's do it.
We, I'm sorry, we've got it, we've got to get on...
No, 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 you accepted one public comment, there's no need to stop now.
No, 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 you accepted one public comment, there's no need to stop now. When somebody approached the podium, give them the proper respect to give them at least a minute to say what they have to say.
Right after the Brown Act, come on.
I can finish. We need to get on to our meeting, so we will take 60 seconds to look at my...
Okay, so, Matt, so much as a comment, but more of a suggestion. Instead of just sitting there talking about things that's not gonna happen and those solutions that you can reach, I say pop the lights on, you guys break up in groups, start walking to school right now and make sure that when those kids come in in the morning, that they are ready, whether they have their books or not. You cannot call school off, parents cannot fall off of work at the last minute because we are not, you guys are not organized, right? So I wish it was as much put into the students and their attendance at school as it was the politicians that's gonna come to the Rifford family ceremony. That's way more organized than the kids getting ready to walk in the door. I'm willing to go with a group that's gonna make sure that when they come in in the morning, that this place is right for them. Forget the rest of your agenda, that can wait. Right now, you have a priority and students are prioritized. Now, this is supposed to be a joint building, I don't see any city council members, I don't see anybody from the city here trying to help you guys figure anything out. So I suggest, instead of putting it on Dr. Rubio in an hour in the morning, what is he gonna do? What is he gonna do in the morning if things aren't right? So you might want to decide to just stop your meeting right now, break up in groups, I'll go with who I'm gonna source my hit is, and let's make sure that when they come in in the morning, at least this place is right or it looks right and make sure it feels right. Other than that, what are you gonna do? Sitting all night till 2:30 o'clock in the morning talking about stuff that's not gonna happen? Sometimes a school board, you gotta get up and you gotta take action.
Thank you.
Talk, you gotta talk to talk, but you gotta walk the walk. In the night, I suggest you start walking campus. I'm willing to go with you. Just break up and we can do it, we can make sure it's straight when they come in here in the morning. But it's not gonna happen sitting there at your desk talking.
Mr. Dunn?
Okay.
60 seconds.
First off, there's numerous noise ordinance violations here tonight. I'm not supposed to be working at, what, 9:30, almost 10 o'clock? But never mind that because we've got something way more important here. And what's important here is that Superintendent Rubio and President Affeldt not be embarrassed. That's really, cut to the chase, that's what you're talking about here. What we're, this school is gonna be open tomorrow come hell or high water because those two men don't wanna be embarrassed publicly. Because if you were to do what your professional teachers told you to do, were concerned about the safety of the children, if you were to assuage those desires of those professionals, you would be embarrassed because the whole, you know, Bay Area would be talking about how you didn't get the school ready in time. So that's, let's, let's really stop mincing words and let's, let's say it how it really is and that's what's going on here. What we're trying to protect here is the, those two gentlemen from being embarrassed. And, you know, never again am I going to listen to you two tell me or any other parents that you're doing something for the children. Never again am I gonna listen to that because clearly, that's not a concern to us.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanna say as a matter of procedure, I don't think if you have a motion in a second, you have to call a roll. You can't sit there and decide whether you like your motion or not, even, even whether it's legal. I mean, the board can take an illegal action and then you later have to tell the council, but you can't stop the board from taking action. You got a motion second, you have to call a roll.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on to the next item.
I'd like Ms. Tamara to take the roll.
Article 8, you have to know, be a quorum. You choose.
I'm gonna, I just would remind the board that the teachers are depending on the board to, there's some other items on this that affect students, that affect teachers regarding positions, regarding, I know, that we have coming up, so I would advise the board that we all be professionals and we get through our agenda, please, so I can get this email and so I can start walking to campus tonight. I would, I would, we'll start walking in tonight, I've running on two hours sleep, guys, I will do my best, I will get other people with me and if you can shake your head all you want, but that's fine, that's how you wanna act. But the thing is, the thing is, is that I can start walking in tonight and I will get whatever help I can get and I will be here as early as I can be here and I will continue to do my best and make sure our students are safe. And I wanna remind everyone in this room, I have high school students coming tomorrow who will not get my email. They're gonna be walking down the street and I wanna know who in this room is responsible for them if something happens and we cancel school. So if anyone in here to tell me, that's me, that's correct. And therefore, I need people, I need everyone to think about the other side of this, there, there are lots of ways to look at this and I have to look at the whole total paternity of safety. And I'm, I'm telling you in my professional opinion, if I were to just send out a blank email, "School's closed" and I miss 50 high school kids out of the 200 that we're now at, by the way, that I have a problem, I have a safety problem because those high school kids are walking around the city unsupervised. And so I would, I'd toward the board that we continue to, on our agenda, I would do everything I can.
So again, professional, call the question. All I can do is not trust, I can trust your opinion, I can trust my opinion, I'm gonna trust the opinion of counsel, which is that we cannot entertain your motion.
You don't have a choice, we selected, what motion do you entertain?
That parent and counsel thinks we do, so I'm gonna trust the legal counsel that we've got advice from. And that's the best we can do at this hour, I'm sorry. So we're gonna move on to the next item, which is item 6.1.
Thanks for letting me down again.